All right, shall we, let's see, how do we got so far? One, two, three, four, five, six? Are we short one person still?
Uh, no, uh, Marka, Marka will not be able to join us this evening.
All right, then I guess that is our full contingent. Uh, shall we begin?
Yep.
All right, uh, thank you everyone this evening for attending our planning commission meeting. The planning commission will continue to hold meetings remotely via Zoom until such time as it has been determined that it is safe to meet in person. Uh, please know that we want to hear from you if you are in the audience and you would like to address the commission during public comment. For an item on the agenda, please use the raise your hand button, which should be at the bottom of your Zoom application. When it is your turn to speak, the planning staff will call your name, unmute you, and you will be given three minutes to address the commission. Uh, we may have some exceptions to that three minute rule this evening. If you are joining us by telephone, you may also address the commission during public comment by pressing star nine. And staff will address you, uh, and identify you, I believe, by your phone number, and you would also get the same, uh, three minutes to address the commission. Uh, anyone in attendance may only speak once per agenda item. Uh, Madeline, if we could have the roll call.
Yes, Chair. Chair Harmon?
Present.
Vice Chair Madden?
Present.
Commissioner Biassodi? Commissioner DeRazzo is absent. Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Lethen?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
You have six commissioners, you have a quorum.
Okay, we have a repost of the agenda, so give me a sec while I, because I got my new file. All right, uh, we have our pledge of allegiance. Um, Kelly, would you like to lead us this evening?
Sure, I would be happy to. Okay, good job, Madeline. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lethen. All right. Approval of minutes. Uh, do we have any comments on our January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes? Any concerns?
There are no comments or concerns, I, I move it, we approve the minutes.
A second?
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Could we get our roll call?
Chair Harmon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Biassodi?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Six, zero, minutes approved.
All right, motion carries, and moving right along, uh, public comments for items not on the agenda. If we have anyone in attendance who wishes to address the commission regarding an item that is not in the agenda, this is your first opportunity. Do we have any hands?
Uh, sorry, uh, Horace, there, I have a con, there's a, uh, we skipped the announcement of conflict of interests, and I have a conflict with the San Diego Pepper Drive.
All right, we, we did not skip that, that is the next item on the agenda, but great.
Sorry.
It sounds like we don't have any hands in any case, so I guess we're moving on to announcements of conflict of interest.
I turned the page too quick.
Yeah. Just to confirm, Madeline, we didn't have any hands?
Chair, we have no hands.
Great, okay, so it sounds like we have the one conflict of interest. I don't think we have, do we have anybody else that has an issue? All right, then I think we can move on to our public hearings. Uh, our first item is twelve sixty-one Clermont Drive. Uh, is it Brandon presenting to us on this? All righty.
Yes, I am here, and good evening, commissioners. How are you guys doing tonight?
Well, thank you.
Uh, can you all see the screen okay?
Yes.
Yeah, so I've, uh, I went with the, the PowerPoint format that is per, preferred for city council meetings, so trying to be more, uh, in line here, so. Um, good evening again, everyone. So the first item on our agenda for tonight is a use permit, uh, an architectural review permit at twelve sixty-one Clermont Drive. So, um, the location of this use permit, uh, project is on Clermont Drive at the corner of Fairmont Drive between Plymouth Way and Hampton Court, just south of Sneeze Lane. It is part of the Cressmore Park Number Two subdivision of nineteen fifty-five, and it sits on a sixty-four hundred and forty square foot lot. So, first with the existing conditions at the site. Currently, the site at Cressmore, or I'm sorry, Clermont Drive, um, contains an eighteen hundred and fifty-seven square foot, uh, single-story, uh, single-family home, which has an FAR point three-two, and, uh, being a single-story home has the same percentage of lot coverage. It currently has three bedrooms and two bathrooms. Moving on to the proposed project for this use permit, the project proposes a second-story addition with a total increase of twelve hundred and seventy-three square feet, uh, for a total size of thirty-one hundred and thirty square feet. This would be an FAR point five-three and a lot coverage of thirty-five percent. The new home would have a total of four bedrooms and three bathrooms. It would have a remodeled expanded kitchen downstairs, along with a new family room, and it would have two new bedrooms and bathrooms upstairs. So, uh, this is the chart of, um, the, the standards that is contained in the staff report, highlighting that, um, on the right side you can find what the proposed conditions are, the existing conditions in the middle. So, um, just to point out that the proposed floor area is point five-three, which is underneath the, um, zoning requirement of point five-five. The floor area is thirty-one thirty proposed, which is below, um, the maximum floor area allowed without a use permit, and the lot coverage is also below these thresholds. Um, the home is proposed to be twenty-six feet and seven inches, uh, which is also below the maximum building height of twenty-eight feet. Uh, this shows the propos, proposed, uh, lower floor with the expanded kitchen living room area, um, and, and also an expanded family room. And, uh, this shows the proposed upper floor with two bedrooms and two bathrooms, along with a rear deck. Uh, the architect has provided, uh, three renderings, as was requested in the, uh, last Architectural Review Committee meeting, so, uh, this is the first proposed rendering from the front. And, um, these are also contained in the staff report. Uh, this is the second proposed rendering from the right side, as viewed from the front. And this is a proposed rendering from the left side, as viewed from the front. And if, um, please feel free to, uh, interrupt me if I'm going too fast, or anyone wants to, uh, focus on something in particular. Um, so, um, to note, the right side setback is built as four feet, one inch, uh, and per the municipal code, the second floor is allowed to maintain setback, which has existed for over ten years, and to go straight up from it as long as it doesn't cross it. I know we've had several different conversations about, uh, setback exceptions, so, um, just to briefly touch on the setback exceptions that are contained in the municipal code, this is a, a direct screenshot from the municipal code exception, so to, just to highlight, um, A and B allow architectural features, uh, porches, decks, et cetera, to, um, to project up to three feet from a, a side and rear property line, and the one in question we are just discussing is F, uh, which reads, whenever the first story of a dwelling in an R-one district projects within a required side or rear yard, where it has existed for not less than ten years, the second story of such dwelling may be built or added so as to project to any such setback degree not greater than the projection of the first story without the necessity of a variance. I know this had come up a little bit in our, um, architecture review meeting, so I would include that as well. Um, and as far as the San Bruno residential design guidelines are concerned, um, the design guidelines do request new construction additions to use either a daylight plane or facade articulation option. It clarifies by saying a daylight plane may be established in, in either direction, um, as determined by the applicant and approved by the ICN Planning Commission. Uh, however, the facade articulation is also an option, um, breaking up the appearance of two-story facades with, uh, various types of, um, architectural features. So in this particular project has, um, satisfied the daylight plane on, on three sides, and it's also satisfied facade articulation options, uh, on multiple sides, including on the, the fourth side by recessing part of the wall, um, using a chimney feature and using, um, high windows. And just, uh, to, I know three of you were present when we had an ARC meeting on January thirteenth, and at that, um, for the, those who were not present at that ARC meeting, the commissioners did request that the architect lower the plate height, uh, by a foot and provide finalized rendering. So in the top right corner was the original, um, height, uh, plate heights of those rooms, which was at, uh, twenty-seven foot, uh, I'm sorry, twenty-se, uh, twenty-seven eleven is what it should say, and it was lowered to twenty-six, seven. So the top right shows that original proposed height, and the bottom left, the, the height as proposed now with a reduction of one foot and four inches, um, as requested from ARC. And that concludes the presentation for twelve sixty-one Clermont Drive. Before I close the PowerPoint, um, were there any specific questions or, or, or slides that anyone would like me to go back to?
Any questions from the commission? Does not appear so at this time. Do we have a presentation from, uh, the applicant or his architect?
I have a question, I have a question.
Sorry, Commissioner Madden.
Why all the, the new Zoom here, there's so many windows that open up. Um, I had a question, um, you, Brandon, you mentioned about the plate height a second ago, being reduced, um, which I'm seeing on sheet A three-point-three, but when I go to the exterior elevation on A three-point-two, it still looks like it's the old height. Which one is correct?
Um, we can definitely ask the architect, that may have been an oversight, but I know the updated, um, cross-sections were definitely, uh, provided specifically for, uh, in response to the ARC meeting.
Okay, I'll let them answer.
Just as a, as a matter of, um, understanding procedures, like, are we making it a condition of approval that, that, that is actually going to be in the final design and get built that way? So there is, you know, consequences if somehow this gets confused?
Um, so, that's, um, the, the final height is as presented in the staff report, um, and, um, the cross-sections and majority of the plans, so, um, we should, you know, definitely consider that that would be the approved height as presented.
Great, all right, thank you.
So it appears that Brian Wong, the architect, is in the room. I can bring him in.
Please do.
Brian, can you hear us?
Yeah, I think so. Uh, you guys can hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, yeah, thank you for everybody, uh, for attending tonight. Uh, to answer your question regarding, uh, the plate height and elevation, um, yes, that is correct, though we have lowered, uh, the entire, uh, plate height down about a foot. Uh, and then on, drawing A three-point-one, uh, on detail, um, one on the east elevation, it shows it as a marker point. Um, I think my computer might have rounded it up a half an inch, but, uh, twenty-five feet, uh, seven inches is correct. Uh, is there any other questions? Yeah, I don't have any presentation really. Uh, thank you, Brent, for presenting for me.
All right, we appreciate you, uh, joining us. Um, could we move on to our, uh, any comments from the public? And could we get a show of hands, if, if anybody who is in attendance who wanted to comment on this could raise their hands at this time?
We have five hands so far, Chair.
I'm counting five. Um, I understand there were some-
Can I say something real quick?
Oh, uh, certainly, Commissioner Madden.
I'm just having a lot of trouble with Zoom, there's two windows open at once. The dimension, that elevation marker in the drawing is not to scale. It's a, it's just a typed-in number. That twenty-five foot eight, when you measure it in the plans, it's not twenty-five foot eight. So it's going to be totally clear about what the true height is going to be at the ridge.
Uh, understood.
Because a lot of people who are about to speak are about, most likely about to complain about the height of this thing, and the drawing does not scale to twenty-five foot eight. It looks like it's just a typed-in number, and it hasn't been changed from before. I could be wrong, but that's what I'm measuring.
Uh, the rendering probably would be the best, uh, way, especially if anybody's, uh, going to be commenting on this. Uh, the rendering, uh, that does show the, should be the correct height on there, as also it shows like, uh, a better vantage point of what the height would be, given that the elevation is straight on. Uh, it might seem a little higher than the renovation, uh, the, the rendering.
Down to the true height, isn't that going to change the, the windows and the look? Because your elevations don't seem to.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I'm actually, well, the windows, uh, everything was adjusted to match, uh, the facade, uh, on the front, uh, the square. Uh, when I took everything down, I took the, the whole, the whole top down, uh, and I didn't adjust the, any slopes or anything like that, so it would look, it would look almost the same.
Okay, but can you confirm that the drawings that are presented, the PDF drawings, are not to scale for the height of the building?
Copy that. Um, I can confirm that, yes.
Okay. So what we're seeing on A three-point-one, details one and two are not to scale. All, all the elevations on that sheet are not to scale, they show the old height. Same thing with A three-point-two, and only A three-point-three has been corrected for the true height. That's my understanding, graphically. So, okay, I just want to make sure that the ridge is at twenty-five, seven, like it shows on A three-point-three.
If I could sort of comment on the direction of this, I mean, this, like, this is the concern I have was just that whoever is actually going to do the work to build it, I mean, honestly, I don't know that they would, they're gonna, they're gonna cut boards to measure, to be instructed, but even if you had your drawing not to scale, as long as they are given accurate numbers to measure out the boards, I would, this would get built as intended. Um, but we definitely want consistent numbers. Um, that's going to be really important, that the, the documents that they get are, are consistent, and it looked like we had a slight reduction in both the lower floor ceiling height and then the upper floor to, to ultimately reach that total plate height. Um, and yeah, I mean, as, as long as we are clear that the appropriate measurements will be delivered for how they're to cut the boards to build this thing, I think we should be fine, um, but we definitely, that consistency is really important.
For the Chair?
Commissioner, Commissioner Biassodi?
If I may, why don't we just kind of create a condition of approval that those conditions be met?
That was, that was my question to Brandon earlier, whether we were including this as a condition of approval, which I am, I am certainly okay with, if, if that's the opinion of the body.
Yeah, I, I, I think just for everybody's peace of mind, we'll just make a condition of approval that the-
The, the plate height shall be twenty-five foot seven, is that the right, or is twenty-five foot seven and a half, is that the right number?
Ridge, the ridge.
Ridge height, sorry.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Everyone happy with that? We can move on to our public comment?
One more question for Brandon. Brandon, um, uh, there's some letters in the, in the packet from some neighbors. Um, one of the issues they bring up has to do apparently with line of sight while driving around the corner. Um, I'm not seeing any real extensions of the building that would affect that, but I am seeing a row of trees or a kind of bunch of trees. Has anyone looked at that at the city? About any vehicular dangers where this, this project could be creating because of trees?
Uh, we did not look at the trees, but I know the, um, the letters were specifically about a second story addition, and so we did, you know, consider, consider those letters that we received, and, uh, you know, it was determined that with the second story addition being made to the right side of the building, that it would not have any impact on the, the line of sight to that corner.
And our tree type that was anticipated here was- And our tree type that was anticipated here was, um, not one that has like a continuous growth down to the bottom where it's like a thick, like a fir or something. It looked like they were deciduous, so we would expect a thinner trunk and then more leafy bodies higher up. So that would not be expected. Is that correct? That's at least how they're illustrated. Okay. Yeah, so I, that seems like it, we would not anticipate significant issues with ground level line of sight from that.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing too. A typical skinny street tree is what I'm seeing in
Okay, we have, I see six hands. Um, oh, one, two, three, four, five, the seven hands. Um, I understand we want to allocate, uh, three minutes with some generosity of spirit in allowing people to go a little over. And if you can keep your comments under three minutes, we will be allowing you to cede your time to another participant if you prefer. Um, so if, if we have someone that simply wants to allow somebody else to speak for them as a group, they can simply get on and cede their time. Um, that said, uh, Madeline, would you like to begin calling on our, uh, participants in the public hearing?
Yes, Chair. Tyson Murphy, I'm going to open up your- I think you're muted, Tyson.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, I was actually told that I would get up to five minutes to speak.
Uh, I think we can allow that, yeah. My thought had been that we would call on somebody else first if they wanted to cede their time to you, because I understood that was a possibility. But yes, we can just set a five-minute timer for you. That's fine.
Okay, and Brandon, can you pull up the photos on page forty-four, forty-five of the packet? Is that possible? Okay, so, hello everyone. My name is Tyson Murphy. Uh, my family and I live right next door at twelve fifty-one Clermont, and we stand to be most affected by this addition. Um, Architectural Review Permit Finding Number One stated that the project would not unreasonably restrict or interfere with light near and adjacent properties. It is actually very unreasonable from our perspective. It is breach of our natural light. And if you can pull up those photos, I can show you an image. But if you can look at those photos, I'm not sure if we can pull them up. Is it possible to stop the timer while we pull those up?
Is that okay, Madeline? You can pause that briefly?
I have the photo available, but we'll do-
Yeah, the, the one that I have from the packet is a little distorted. I don't have the PowerPoint.
Can everyone see that okay?
Uh, yep. I don't know if you can zoom in on that render.
Okay. These are images from our backyard. And if you consider for a moment that this is your backyard, you're looking over the other side of the fence, a huge structure goes up on your neighbor's yard right next to your property line at a height of, I guess it is twenty-five feet, seven inches. Yet because your property sits on a lower foundation, it's more like twenty-eight feet above your yard. And as you can see, the sun barely creeps over the neighbor's house as it currently stands. Therefore, it's obvious that your sun will be completely cut off by the new second story, have a serious shading impact on you. Now you can enjoy the natural light filtering into your house through your large windows or enjoy the warmth it brings while you're sitting on your outdoor patio. You have to worry about higher utility bills and also decreased property value because your house with a gigantic apartment building-like structure looming over it is not nearly as desirable as it would be without that huge apartment building-like structure looming over it. Not to mention, the privacy you currently enjoy will be severely impacted by the second story running the length of the house along the property line with an outdoor deck at the back of it. Then of course, there's the lengthy period of construction which will occur a mere four feet from your backyard, spewing construction dust into it, impacting your family, especially the asthmatic ones. Now, what we learned in the A R C that was that no daylight plane study was conducted on the side of their house facing our house, probably because it was clear how significant the shading findings would be. This was actually characterized at loophole by one of the commissioners during that meeting. Um, a meeting in which really the architect did not have everything in order or up to date and was constantly making updates. Even tonight, it doesn't seem like everything is in order. And how are we supposed to stay on top of the most updated information when this is the case for ourselves and other concerned neighbors? It's a breakdown in the flow of information that creates a disadvantage for us. And then if you look the next page, port forty-six, page forty-six of the packet, there's a bird's eye image of twelve sixty-one Clermont. Uh, you'll see there's another wing of the house that juts out to the southeast towards Fairmont Drive. This wing is surrounded on all three sides of the property owner's backyard, side yard, and front yard. Consequently, a second story erected there instead would have minimal, if any, impact on any of the neighbors. Regarding the sheer size of this thing, most houses nearby are less than fifteen hundred square feet. Total size of this one that they want is thirty-one hundred and thirty square feet. Our house is fourteen hundred and ten square feet, and next door to a thirty-one hundred and thirty square foot structure will make ours look like his guest house or A D U. That's a bad look and it's completely out of scale for the neighborhood. Size of the house is also way out of character for the neighborhood. There are great people here who care about, look out for each other. This has become evident to me as I've gotten to know multiple neighbors in the last few months, many of whom have been living here for decades. And I've, it's come to realize that the integrity of this neighborhood is very important to them. And many of them are concerned with this project, but you don't need to take my word for it. You can see that for yourself in their written comments on pages forty-seven and forty-nine of the packet. And I do want to state for the record, we are not opposed to anyone adding or improving their home. And we also understand that some impact cannot be avoided, but we are opposed to the significant impact this project would bring to us and to the neighborhood. So in conclusion, we respectfully ask the commission members to deny this use permit application as currently submitted for a revised application that favors more balanced approach of scaling down the square footage to better fit in with the neighborhood and moving the second story to the southeast. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Um, shall we call on the rest of our commenters?
Yes, John Gonzalez, I'm going to open your mic. Can you hear us, John?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm opposed to this because I'm directly behind this building and it will , uh, cut out my, uh, view of my morning sunlight. And also I'm, I'm concerned, are there going to be any windows on that west gable end on the second story looking out that, on that wall there looking west, westerly? That's a question. Hello?
Uh, the, the way this works is you give your comments and we can, uh, ask staff to, uh, look into things, but we can't really sort of, it's not a question and answer session. It's a comment.
Okay, okay. Well, i- if there is, so that will be, uh, directly be, uh, looked onto my, uh, property and then, and it would interfere with privacy. I wouldn't, uh, want someone just looking out into my yard, especially when I have a pool and I'm having the entertainment and, and people over. I wouldn't want somebody just peeking down into my yard. Uh, but in the morning there, it will obstruct my, uh, my morning light and, uh, that's a great That's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne McLaughlin, I'm going to open up your mic. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Um, do you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yes? Okay, great. Um, this daylight plane or the solar path study, uh, really bothers me that they're able to exclude the most affected, um, side, the side that's going to affect the, the Murphy's house next door. So in thinking about it, I tried, I thought I would try to fill in the gap to see what were they trying to hide? So by my estimate, figuring, um, say fifteen feet away from twelve sixty-one wall to the backyard at twelve fifty-one, the sun will need to be about sixty-five degrees to have sunlight reach that part of the patio. I used to teach math and geometry and people said, why do you need to know that the Thagaryon theorem? But you know, it comes in handy. So that means that shortly before the summer solstice, which is seventy-five degrees according to their handout, the sun will be higher than the side of the house and will, they will be able to get sun over the roof. But then it will sharply go away again. So that really they're only going to get sun at twelve fifty-one in their backyard for two or three months out of the year. I, I just don't think this is reasonable. I, the height, you say the height limit has to be twenty-eight feet, but from their house, since they're downhill from twelve sixty-one, there's another four or five feet, feet there. So it's over thirty feet high from their house, which is, you know, that's, it's dominating looking, it, it's a very dominant, um, plain-looking wall. So I also think not enough consideration has been given at the last two meetings to the impact on eleven eighty-one Fairmont, where the second floor deck is going to be looking right out on their property. And it's close to the, it's close to the property line. And I think that's been ignored. Um, I've learned a lot from this whole process. And I think if this, um, solar path study continues on as it, as it is, if you keep using this in your planning, it really needs to be reformed because it is so unfair that someone is able to omit the study, uh, from the study at which is most effective. Thank you.
The next person I have is, I believe, N G or In. I'm going to allow you to talk. Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
N G is Nancy Green and I'm Roy Green. Uh, we live on Glenview Drive, uh, directly behind the property. Um, we noticed in the renderings that there's no renderings of the backside of the house. And my comment is, is they should be included and for folks to view. Um, I think John Gonzalez is making that same point. So we, I, I just don't understand why the, in a three hundred and sixty degree set of renderings is not included in the plan for folks to view and comment on.
Uh, John McLaughlin, I'm going to open the mic. Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. First of all, uh, and I don't believe this should count against my time, I do want to go on record that I'm concerned that the runniness information was put about, uh, put out on the Zoom link. And it may affect its other, some people's opportunity to participate tonight. Uh, San Bruno's elected to use Zoom for their public meetings, and their public meetings are subject to the public record, uh, meeting legislation and both in intent and in actuality. And I believe you should reconsider whether you even want to consider this item tonight. I know that you've contacted Mark, the city attorney, uh, and I'm not sure how he would react if you do a claim against you because, uh, you have not given adequate and accurate notice for the meeting. Uh, that being said, I'll go on with the rest of my presentation. And first of all, I just want to say how proud I am of my neighbors. Uh, I live in a great neighborhood and it's, it's obvious just from hearing them talk. The concerns I expressed previously to the Architectural Review Committee still stand: height, impact on immediate neighbors, traffic, safety. Also, I agree with concerns by the others who preceded me regarding the impact of the project and need not restate them. On the subject of traffic safety, that is a bad street, uh, firm out in the Fairmont. There's been at least one person hit, uh, and injured seriously. Uh, visibility is bad. It's, it was poorly designed, uh, from the start, the street was. Uh, the current foliage on the home at, uh, twelve fifty-one is very overgrown and you can see how it effect, would affect, uh, visibility if the, the, a better job is not done with the replacement foliage. I'm concerned that today's exception becomes tomorrow's precedent, and my neighbors and I will be faced with future structures like this which slide through even though they damage their neighbors' enjoyment of the property they own. The new occupant sent us a nice letter talking about how the child was so cramped and constricted at Shelter Creek and how much they wanted them to enjoy their new expanded home. What about the Murphy family? Their daughter also deserves a pleasant, comfortable home without this edifice sprouting upward next to them. A question for the Lees: How would you feel if something like this was done to you and your child after you invested so much money in the property? Is my understanding from talking to the prior owner, who I've known even longer than I, I've lived in, uh, San Bruno, that, uh, he sold the property as part of a ten thirty-one exchange for, and the owner was buying it, the purchaser was buying it for their son. If it is indeed a ten thirty-one exchange, it's investment property. An investment property can be modified, remodeled and sold or turned into a rental. Uh, and that also affects the, the neighborhood. The owner, the current condition of the property does not reflect pride of ownership. The lawn hasn't been mowed since the property changed hands. The shrubbery is, uh, overgrown. And if this is how they intend to treat the property after all this remodeling is done, I don't think it's going to enhance the value of our neighborhood. I believe many of the problems that our neighborhood sees with this project could have been avoided if the applicant had just listened to their neighbor and considered their needs. There's ample evidence in our neighborhood that second story additions can be friendly to neighbors. You just, all you have to do is walk around the neighborhood and look at what has been constructed over the years. Uh, thank you very much. That, those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin?
I'm going to open the microphone. Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Now you can hear me. I'm a longtime resident of San Bruno since sixty-nine. Uh, my, I'm not opposed to additions or changes in houses. My next door neighbor actually bumped out and added two bedrooms and a bathroom, so he now has a five-bedroom, three-bath home. My neighbor across the street did something similar. I myself added on my house, but my architect was, uh, Ken Ibarra, and he provided several, uh, options for us, which I then went to my neighbors and said, we're planning to change the house a little. Would you be interested in seeing which ones are okay? I understand in this case that the neighbors were not contacted by the owner, which I think could have solved some of the issues. I think the plan currently is a, is not good. I, I couldn't, uh, support it. It would look like a hotel or actually a warehouse. It wouldn't be consistent at all with the neighborhood. I have a problem with that. And I know the people who lived in- And I know the people who lived in there before, that house was a four-bedroom, two-bath. So I'm, I'm a little confused, why would he need to add, um, and increase it to three thousand one hundred some square feet? It seems like it maybe it's gonna be a boarding house or something. And, and talking about traffic, this, the house is on Claremont, which is the main thoroughfare, there are only three ways to get in and out of Crestmore Part Two, that is one of them, lots of traffic. I don't think that that actually has been fully understood or taken into consideration. And, uh, I'd also like to comment that I had difficulty in the flyer that I received trying to get connected to the Zoom meeting. Uh, the information on there didn't match, nor did the Zoom phone number. I tried even to use the phone number referral, that didn't work, so that was an issue. I did find by going to San Bruno, um, website, I did ultimately find this site and I'm glad that you're allowing me to speak. So, in conclusion, I agree with, uh, the Murphys. I think it would be terrible if they wanted to add solar on their, on their house, it wouldn't, it wouldn't work. They wouldn't have enough sunlight. I mean, that, that's a factor, that's adversely affecting them. And, and the fact that it's not consistent with the neighborhood, you have, it's a big ice door, so if you come into the neighborhood, you drive down the street, you see this warehouse or hotel or structure that's inconsistent, I would oppose that. I'm not opposed to people making changes to their home or adding on, as long as it's consistent with everyone in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Our last speaker, I believe, is Yolanda. Yolanda, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Great, yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Yolanda Yang, I live at twelve forty-one Claremont. I am next to the Murphy house, um, two houses down from the proposed project and I, uh, wanted to reiterate and voice my own, uh, reiterate other concerns and voice my own concerns. Um, I, similar to others, am not opposed to people making changes to their homes if it does not significantly, um, impact in a negative way, uh, the neighborhood and their neighbors. I also was not contacted by the owner about this proposed project. I want to talk about the sun, uh, issue, um, which affects the Murphy house and also my house. Um, I think this is a very serious concern. I can attest that all of the afternoon sun comes only from the direction over the Murphy house, which is the same direction that would be over the proposed project and that building a two-story on top of, um, the, the current house that would extend, um, over the area and next to the area of the backyard would, um, I think be a huge impact to Tyson's house, the Murphy house, but, and I think it would also affect my house. Uh, I have a greater concern for my neighbor than for me because I think that his house would be, um, so significantly impacted. But I, I, you know, really want to, uh, I, I just can't state how important it is to get some afternoon sun for so many reasons, um, not just, uh, the obvious, but I, I feel that that, um, affects mood and, uh, just your, your, your quality of life. I think privacy is an issue. Um, a deck in the back on second story would be something where the privacy issues for immediate neighbors, um, including the Murphy household, including, uh, John's household and mine would, would be a concern. Um, I have a concern with property values declining, um, for the houses that are, uh, you know, particularly, um, very close to the current project. And I, um, am aligned with the others who have spoken tonight in that I, I feel this project is not consistent with the neighborhood. Um, by the way, I, I have lived in, uh, twelve forty-one Claremont for sixteen years now and I think this is a wonderful neighborhood. Um, I would hate to see something like this happen to my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone, uh, commented, um, I believe we need-
Chair, we have one more speaker.
Last minute.
Yes. John, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, everybody, I, I live on eleven sixty Fairmont Drive, which is at the intersection of Claremont and Fairmont. I also, I want to reiterate the concerns of traffic, uh, safety, uh, by some already mentioned. That, that intersection between Fairmont and Claremont is like a J-intersection that when people are turning in from Claremont onto Fairmont, oftentimes when cars are parked on both sides of the curb, it is a very, um, restricted, uh, entrance, so two cars can't possibly, you know, navigate very safely through that little intersection there. So when the, when the house is increased, uh, at a, at the size that is proposed, I have, I have major concern of, uh, visibility being, uh, further constricted, uh, especially coming in from Fairmont into Fairmont in that direction, as, as well as the, when the size of the house is increased at such scale, I, I can, I'm concerned that there will be more cars, um, visitors or residents parking on the street, uh, on that particular, in that Fairmont section to cause further risk of, uh, traffic safety in that intersection for residents, walkers and, uh, just, you know, motorists, that's all. Thank you.
I understand we need a motion to close our public hearing, or, oh, do we have another hand?
No, I do not see any more hands.
I think I'm seeing, uh, Brian Wong, is that somebody that already spoke that just still has their hand up?
That's the architect?
Oh, okay, sorry, I lost track. Um, I believe we need to, want to close our public hearing before we come back for discussion? Do we have a motion?
Through the chair, a motion, do we close? We close the public hearing.
Do you want a second, Mary Lou?
Okay.
Great. Roll call, please.
Chair Harmon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Biassodi?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Liffen?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Six-zero, motion passes.
So I want to take the prerogative of the chair, it's time to ask staff how serious this concern is around the issue with our Zoom link, um, because, uh, you know, we, we like to comply with the Brown Act and, um, it does sound like there's a concern that if we take a vote on this today, that it may be, that, that it's, aside from any appeal to council or whatever, that that vote may be invalid. Have we confirmed that we're, that we are supposed to take an action this evening?
Yes, Chair Harmon, uh, so, uh, the, uh, postcards and, and notices that were, uh, sent out to the neighborhood did have the correct Zoom link. Um, the agenda that was posted on Friday, uh, did not have the correct Zoom link, uh, but then that was corrected today, uh, for this meeting. We did send out, um, emails and also phone calls to everyone that had expressed interest on the, uh, agenda items this evening and we've also talked to the city clerk and the, the city attorney and, um, both are, uh, you know, have found that the, um, that the issue is, um, you know, is unfortunate, but it is not something that would prevent you from taking action this evening, um, specifically because the, um, you know, most people are gonna, would, would access, uh, this evening's meeting through the Zoom link, through the agenda, which the corrected posted agenda was posted before the meeting started, so, yeah, so that's, um, that's what happened.
Okay, and what was the timeline? I mean, I guess I'm concerned because somebody could have downloaded the packet, you know, ahead of time, and what was the lead time that we got our corrected version up?
Um, it was, it was actually, I think it was just about five o'clock or, or so.
Through the chair. Um, in reality, if someone, if someone tried, you know, nor typically, you go through the link and you click on and you take the appropriate, uh, direction to, to be accepted in. You can't do it much before, several minutes before starting time. You stay on and it says host letting you in, it just spins and spins and spins. So if they were receiving that, they would, you know, they've got it two hours prior, I'm not trying to minimize any means, but I just wanna put a bit of clarification there, that you could only do it through that link and you can't get it any sooner and, um, and no, so anyway, that's my comment.
Just to, to respond to that, um, Commissioner Johnson, my point is that the, you obviously like, you can't use the link hours in advance, but you could have downloaded the agenda hours in advance and so that's, that's where I am a little concerned about this, that a, as the commenter said, we could have had somebody who downloaded the, you know, a document with the wrong link, they were trying to click on the wrong link and did not get the comment. Um, and we do want to receive everyone's comments. I mean, it does sound like people largely dealt with that. Um, I guess I, I just like, I don't like the idea of the city having legal liability open from something like that. If, if, uh, if, uh, our city attorney, if, if Mark Zaffarato is satisfied that there is precedent for this sort of thing and that that's not an issue, then fine, but it does, it seems like a valid concern to raise.
Thank you for your comment.
Um, that said, like, if we do, if we've had this cleared, um, then I guess we can continue. Um, Mr. Wong, did you want to respond to any of the concerns? You are on mute.
I said, I'll try my best, there was quite a bit. Um, maybe I'll do, uh, focus on the, the key points that it seems like most of the people were pointing out. Um, I think one of the things that, uh, kept coming up was, uh, why we chose to put the second floor on that side versus, um, the other side of the house. Um, one of the main reasons, uh, was because of traffic. Uh, if we placed it on the, the other side, it would be even larger, um, because if it's on the corner, we place in the back, uh, and also have trees and it would have more of a transition. Um, and it just made more sense because there's other houses in the neighborhood that had the same, similar design, which is basically a second floor on top of the garage. Um, so that was one of the concerns that we had, was that how it could fit in, uh, where it doesn't stick out. Uh, and by putting it, uh, really far in front, uh, and close to the trending of that street, that didn't make any sense. Uh, so that's why we placed it on the, the back, the side. In terms of, um, the shed, the elevation and the foundation of our side being higher, the foundation is the same for both houses. Uh, I think the difference was we have crawl space and they might not have a crawl space, but just wanted to clarify that, that's just, um, that was incorrect. Um, and in terms of the style, uh, we've, we've gone through this design process a couple of times already and our original design was, um, different and we highly respect, uh, the commissioners and all their design advice and every time we've had one of these, uh, design creep reviews, we have changed our design, lowered our height, um, did everything we could to meet all that. Um, and in the end, I feel like we've, we've met all of the requirements. Also, in terms of the style of the house, uh, with the, the balcony or the, the wrapping, um, patio and all that, that's very ranch style. I, I think it might look, uh, a little bit modern with the coloring, um, but ultimately it's, it's like a ranch-style house and I feel like, um, we, we followed that pretty closely, um, in terms of, of that style, um, having the entrance reseated underneath, uh, the porch and all that. Right, and then let's see, what else? I think that was, that was, uh, that was the, one of the big items. Um, I guess the second big item was, uh, we, our neighbor, uh, wasn't here when we were designing the project, like, he wasn't physically here, uh, because that house is vacant. Um, so I mean, if he was here earlier, we would, we would definitely have consulted him, uh, but it, we spent over about a, a year designing this project and, uh, he can't, you know, he's here at the very end, um, and he didn't like what he saw and, but, you know, uh, we're already towards the end of the design and already kind of well into the design review, so, you know, it's, we, we tried our best. Yeah, and we have the utmost respect for the community. We, we don't wanna do anything out of the norm to make anyone so uncomfortable. Uh, if there's need for privacy, uh, please let us know, we'll do what we can, uh, put up shades, uh, glass can be tinted. I think one of the concerns is the west side, uh, we made sure that none of the windows faced anybody's back guard and if that is not true, we will change the size of the window and we will do what we need to, to make sure that our neighbors are happy.
Am I saying it correctly? I looked, I believe the, the windows along the sort of taller side were placed above my level from the diagrams?
Absolutely, there, everything was placed a little higher and anything facing our neighbor's house, uh, we put those as high as possible. Uh, you're not gonna, if anything from the inside, we'll be looking into the clouds, uh, we won't be looking at the back guard of anybody's house.
If that's everything, do we have any questions, additional questions or comments from the commission?
Through the chair. Um, can Mr. Wong address concerns for the, the, uh, sun study or the sun concerns or the lack of a, um-
I can, uh, address that. Um, so the sun study, the reason why we gave all information there was, I mean, the sun changes quite a bit throughout the day, throughout the year. Um, to encompass every single situation, you would only point out the worst situation or, or whatnot. It wouldn't, doesn't really make sense. So it shows the direction of sh, of sun and it shows the highest and the lowest. Um, so you could see how the sun moves and it changes. Um, and, yeah, I think, I, if I had to choose between shade and having it stick out into, uh, the, the southeast side where it's more of a potential hazard for oncoming traffic, then I would choose the safety versus, uh, having it on the, the west side. Yes. But in terms of the, the sun study, I mean, all the information is there that's necessary for somebody to figure out whether or not they'll be in shade, uh, throughout the entire year, so. I, does that answer the, the question?
Can, can I ask in regard to this, uh, concern around the traffic? I'm honestly, I'm a little puzzled as to how a second-story addition has anything to do with visibility around the corner in the first place. Like, from the groundville, the second story is, you know, I mean, it's, it's what's at groundville, I'm, I'm a little puzzled, uh, like, I mean, the, the tree concern, whatever, and I have, I have a question about that, um, for staff in a bit, but, um, I guess I'm, I'm honestly a little puzzled how, in either direction, in terms of neighborhood concerns around the second story being a problem for visibility around the corner or your concerns around would doing the second story on this other side cause that issue?
Understood. Um, if I may, I can share my screen, I can show the rendering, or, uh, if you see the rendering, uh, looking from, I guess that would be, if you're standing on the east side, uh, if you look at the rendering, uh, you'll see, uh, the direction, uh, of the house coming out, right? So if you imagine another ten, twelve feet going up, if you're walking along the street, it would be rather towering. Um, so, and so by pushing it back, when you're walking along the street, you see like a first, like a one-story house versus a two-story house and therefore it would be less distracting. Um, basically, a little smaller.
In order to get the square footage that you're getting, that you would actually need to extend it all the way, like, straight up to the edge of the current footprint or, or beyond, is that-
No, we, we stayed completely within our, our existing footprint. Uh, we've only taken one side of the, the building.
Right, I was, I was trying to understand that, so you're saying if, if you had rotated it ninety degrees and done it over the existing, whatever that room is over on the southeast side, that it, that you would then have the second story approaching the street more?
Think I can just share my screen, it's, um, well, easier, okay. I think, can you guys, everybody see that?
Yes.
Yeah, so my point is that if this is the second story, if we place it on this side over here, what would happen is if you were standing- what would happen is if you were standing over here and you're looking this way, instead of being only, I believe, 13 feet, it would be 25 feet. So a good example would be this rendering over here. So because this set back pretty far, um, it would seem a little bit smaller and further away. If we were to place the second story on this side, it would actually go all the way up, well, well past the, the image screen. So you can imagine how much taller it would look. And so it makes a lot of logical sense to have it on that side, um, from a visual perspective.
I, I guess, I mean, to be honest, I think it would care less about what the, the visual impact is to somebody walking along the street than we would care about the neighbors and about street visibility in terms of traffic safety. And as I said, it doesn't seem like this impacts traffic safety regardless of that, this, you know, the, what happens within the footprint of the building doesn't seem like it affects sightlines along the street in terms of, you know, not having a car hit a pedestrian or something.
Well, um, so if you were here, it would be much, much higher. You wouldn't, it would be, it'd be more tiring, uh, something taller as you're making the turn. And we wanted to avoid that. It would look, it would look more overbearing if that was, if that, our goal was to be less overbearing. And the point is if you put on this side closer to the street and closer out, uh, and on top of that, if you were to do that, it would, it'd be, I mean, we're following also the other designs, uh, the house. Uh, you generally put that second story floor right on top of the garage because the garage sticks out a bit, so it can be recessed a little bit. But, uh, yeah.
Through the chair.
I'm sure it also?
I would concur with, um, with, uh, Commissioner Harmon. Uh, and I only see it as if it was placed on the other side. I mean, that's on the table, so that's probably not even relevant. It would just be a distraction, but certainly not a safety factor. Distraction and maybe not something that would be as pleasantly to look at, but will really address a safety issue. And, and, and it's not even relevant. So I guess the only relevancy that I could see is that if you were to restructure it and you were to comply with, you, with the request of the neighbors is that you were to move it to the other side, I think your points are well taken in the fact that it is a distraction. It could potentially be a safety factor, you know, all those kinds of things. But this, at this particular time, it isn't, from my point of view, it isn't, it isn't relevant. It isn't safety and it seems to be, um, uh, you know, you've, you've pointed out the facts pretty clearly, which I appreciate.
Do you have any additional? It looks like I have, uh, Commissioner Lethem.
Uh, I think Commissioner Madden had his hand up first, so I'm gonna let him, I'm gonna let him fire first.
Certainly.
Thanks. I've just been looking at this on Google Earth while people have been talking. I think traffic issue, I think one of the neighbors mentioned it before. The, the primary source of the problem, I think, just appears to be the design of the intersection itself and the narrowness of the streets. Um, you know, I can, I can, I can see what they're talking about when you make this turn coming south on Claremont, onto Fair, Fairmont. You've got these striped parking aisles. It looks like you've got a fairly recent crosswalk that's been added. And then you've got narrow streets on Fairmont. And when cars are parked too close to the radius, I can definitely see how hard it is to get in and out of there. Um, that said, I don't think this house has any effect on that, on this design. I think it's just kind of inherent to the intersection that, um, it's just a bunch, two, uh, a T-intersection of narrow streets. Um, and this house just happens to be there. So I think it's just, uh, kind of the nature of the, of the design of the streets, not so much the house.
Did you want to go ahead, Commissioner Lethem?
Sure. Um, I wanted to concur that I, I am not seeing much in the way of traffic concern. Um, all I'm seeing is, is building going upwards in that area and not, um, interfering with, um, the sightline of traffic. Um, and then regarding the, the reason why they set the, um, the upper floor addition where they did about the garage, it seems as though it provides the kind of step backs that, um, our code requires as far as frontage, um, along the streets. Um, I do know that, that the code that we follow requires that, um, there not be just a, a flat plain of two-story home facing the street. Um, and, uh, I, I do understand logically why they put the addition where they did because it does offer some visual relief from the front and provides that kind of articulation and step back that's, that's required. Um, I'm kind of going through my little list of questions here. Um, many of them were addressed, the four-foot-one, um, setback on the right-hand side of the property. It sounds as though that was basically grandfathered in with, um, the prior, um, the prior setback. So that, um, let's check from my list. The westerly windows, I was wondering if we could look at the westerly windows. Um, Mr. Gonzalez had, um, raised a concern about privacy from the westerly windows. And I'm also interested in the privacy, um, of the upper story deck that was raised by, um, I think it was, uh, James P. in Yolanda.
Yep. So I've, uh, I've put the, uh, the elevations up. They are in the architecture review packet. There was, um, one comment from, uh, neighbors that they were not available, but they, they have, they are in the, um, archi, the planning commission packet this evening. Um, so you can see the, um, uh, the rear elevation that includes the, the deck and also the side elevation. Um, that includes the deck. So, uh, the window, the, the small window, um, on the second floor, which is above eye level is for the closet. And then the two other, um, windows above eye level are for the restroom. And then the other clear story window, um, above eye level is in the, the front bedroom.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't see much in the way of a privacy intrusion on the west elevation windows. Those do seem, um, high and respectful. Um, and then the, the deck, what does that overlook? Uh, if you could show me a plan, that would be helpful.
So the deck, um, does extend, um, to, to the side and then it, um, um, it, it also, uh, you can see it's also, also its relationship, uh, to 1181 Fairmont. So it appears that it would be facing towards their rear yard as, um, uh, the speaker mentioned.
And as far as screening, uh, it looks to me as though there's some, um, landscaping that may be providing screening. Can, can somebody elaborate on that?
Yeah, I believe, um, there is, uh, a plant key here. Um, it's hard to tell which, uh, oh, let's see. Um, this is, it's actually a box, it's actually a boxed hedge, so it would not be, um, that would be a very small plant at, at ground level, below the fence height.
There's only one tree, uh, in that corner that would be, uh, taller.
Yeah, the, the one tree would be a paper birch.
Is, um, but if we need to add taller trees in that location, that's what we can accommodate.
I mean, if you did something like, uh, replace the box edges with something like a rose, sort of skinny cypress type things that keep to a tight footprint but are taller?
Absolutely. That's not a problem.
And they smell nice.
Yeah. The, yeah, the only privacy concern that I have is that deck. All, all the windows seem to be very thoughtfully placed.
I see, uh, Commissioner Biassadi with a hand up?
Yeah, thank you, Eric Horus. Um, I'm kind of struggling with this one because I understand everyone's concerns about it being a larger home, but you know, just a few blocks away in that same neighborhood, we had all the Crestmore fire homes that we allowed to be even bigger than this. Uh, and I, I realize people are stressing over it, but I, I am struggling myself with that. My bigger concern that was raised by folks tonight that I would like addressed is the, uh, shadow study on page three point four. I've not seen one done like this. If the architect could possibly explain how, uh, to read this, I would appreciate it. Usually when we see shadow studies, it, um, it shows the actual like footprint of the shadow. This one's a little bit more difficult to read. So if I could get an explanation of that, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, that's not a problem. Um, so, uh, on the page A three point four, if we can get it to that. Uh, okay, so the sun, December, uh, the two Decembers, that's basically where the, the angles of which the sun will, if you, if it's shining, um, like between those two, and this is where the sun will travel. And between March and September, uh, it will travel to the other side. And so that you kind of see the path of the sun of where it's going to be going. So throughout those paths, we'll be creating angles throughout, you know, the, the day, depending on the month it is. And so to know how high, uh, the sun is, it changes, uh, between the seasons. So at the bottom, at the winter time, uh, it's 29.8 degrees. Uh, and then during the summer it'll be much higher, uh, and which is 75 degrees. Um, and so that basically kind of shows you the height as well as the direction of the sun, given this specific point, uh, on the planet, I guess. Um, but that's, that's how it would, so if you basically draw basically a straight line anywhere on this map across to where you want to see the height, uh, or where the sun angle is, uh, you could, uh, given the way it's shown. Cause the key, uh, information is the angles and of the direction of the sun and the orientation of the house, um, from north to south. Or you, yeah. I'm sorry, was that, is that clear? Or let, please ask, you know, the question if that was?
Yeah, I prefer shadow studies though. This, this is for public consumption. This is something you have to sit and calculate. And it's not very consumer friendly. And I think that's what you're getting a lot of pushback from the neighbors. Cause this looks like trying to hide something, but I mean, yeah. Yeah, I would, I would have preferred a shadow study.
Just to ask, is it basically that if, so the, the point at the center of that diagram where you, where you have the plus, where those two, um, axes come together? What we're seeing there with the June and June, the March or September equinox ones, those are the direction of sunrise, the sunrise and sunset points on that? Okay.
Yes, so set and then rise, yeah.
And then we have the, and then the angle that's given is the, um, the apogee, the, the peak angle?
Yes, of that specific point, uh, for this house, yeah.
Yeah. I do at least understand it correctly. Um, yeah. It is a, it's a little, it takes a little effort to interpret. Uh, I'm sorry, I see we have, uh, Commissioners Lethem and Madden again. Um, sure, uh, Commissioner Madden, do you want to go first again?
Sure, why not? Uh, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Biassadi. I mean, this, uh, shadow study diagram is not very user-friendly at all. Um, normally what I'm used to seeing is the actual shadows projected at different times of the year, uh, at different times of the day, morning, evening, noon, winter, fall, spring, summer, et cetera. Um, so, uh, I, I don't think this is a very, uh, helpful diagram. It doesn't seem to account for the, the, the second story addition. Uh, maybe I'm misinterpreting it, but I don't see any change, drastic change in the line work where that shadow would kind of change. It just seems like the nice smooth oval all around. I'm not sure if you're showing the extent of the shadow there or not, or just the position of the sun somehow. So, um, I agree that it's, uh, not very helpful. Um, and again, I, I do have, like you, I've already mentioned this a couple of times. I have concerns when you have this coupled with a drawing that's been submitted, not to scale. And the main issue for many people on this is the height of the building. That's very concerning to me.
Commissioner Lethem?
Yeah, um, I also had, I struggled to understand the shadow study. In fact, when I was reviewing the packet, um, I did see that page and didn't, it, it did not dawn on me that that was an actual, um, it sounds like maybe not shadow study, but more of a sun study. Um, it, it doesn't tell me the effect, it doesn't illustrate the effect that, that the new addition would have as far as casting shadow on the neighbors. Um, and I think a question that I have for staff surrounding that is, first of all, I, I'm more familiar with shadow studies on larger, um, commercial projects. I'm curious whether or not this was a requirement or something the architect did to satisfy a request. But also, eh, eh, even regardless of the shadow study or the results of the, what the shadow study would even tell us is, if this structure meets the daylight plane requirements setbacks, I mean, basically it checks all the boxes that I'm seeing as far as policy. Um, would that shadow study really have any bearing or have any merit regarding limitations on, on what we can or should approve?
Um, yes, uh, through the chair. Uh, the, uh, the shadow study is not required for, uh, uh, additions, um, second story additions. And so this was the, the fact that the applicant provided it was, you know, an additional, uh, piece of information. Um, certainly the, on a broader scale, um, and, and one of her findings that, that were this, where the, where the planning commission has some discretion is, uh, regarding light and air. Um, so, you know, in general, does the, you know, does the proposal, um, you know, impact light and air, uh, to the property? Uh, so we don't, that is not typically, you know, measured, uh, for a single-family resident, residents. Um, but certainly that's something that the planning commission could take into consideration, um, as part of their deliberations and findings.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Biassadi had his hand up.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a little bit more in your wheelhouse than mine, but, um, solar blocking sunlight on somebody's roof where they could potentially could put solar. Can somebody clarify what those rules, conditions, whatever? Cause I, I'm pretty sure we can't build something that's going to put a shadow onto somebody else's roof.
No, my understanding is there is, there is, there is state law around this issue, but it doesn't apply to cutting off the possibility of deploying solar in a situation like this. Because I, I have concerns around solar productivity since I work in the industry myself, but I don't, I don't see that being applicable here. And I think, uh, uh, staff may clarify that it may not apply in residential cases anyway. It usually is a more large industrial scale situation.
I, I would have to say, um, you know, that I, I'm not familiar with the laws that would, um, you know, that affect, would affect this. But I, my, it's, I, I believe it's the fact that if you, there may be an issue if you're impacting someone that already has solar. And that, you know, that may be actually more of a, of a civil issue. Um, I don't know if there's, uh, you know, what the legal precedence is for that.
Yeah, I know, I know from my job that there is law around if somebody already has solar panels deployed and you do something that cuts off their sun, they have a cause of action against you, but that does not appear to be the case here. Uh, Commissioner Morgan?
Uh, yeah, um, I appreciate the changes that the architect and homeowner has made to make the place more, uh, in line with surrounding properties. Uh, they've done, done well on that. My main concern is overshadowing, uh, the 1251. And can I ask how far, I, I know that the, the setback is five feet and that they're stuck with that, that's the original setback. But how far is that, uh, the wall of the building from the main wall of next door, 25, 1251?
Well, let me see, I'll go back to the screen share, although actually I may go back to, go back here.
About eleven to twelve feet?
Let me.
Yeah, that distance from there to there.
Yeah, that, I think there's a bit of distortion here. Let me go back to this, even though this is.
I have it drawn, and at least according to my scaled drawing, wall to wall, it should be about twenty two feet.
Yeah, so I think, you know, it's important to, you know, just basically understand what is going on at the neighbor's home. The white, the white area you see is a covered patio. And then you can see how the house steps back and in so that the, the main outdoor living area is probably at least twenty feet, you know, where it steps back the most.
It's twenty feet at the furthest point?
Yeah.
Okay, that's not too bad, but that would be my main concern, that it's overshadowing the house next door and maybe cutting out the sunlight.
I don't see any further hints, so I did want to come, I mean, like I definitely, you know, being in the industry myself, the fact that this basically, I mean, it does, it definitely looks like this makes rooftop solar non-viable on this property, which is unfortunate, but it doesn't have solar deployed. And as I understand it, both our city code and the state law don't, I mean, they don't make that an allowable reason under the circumstances. And, I mean, I think we, it's really important that people who are, you know, planning to build for their homes have certainty, that they know, you know, you follow the rules, you go through the steps, and you get your permit, and you don't have sort of unpredictable extensive redesigns. To be honest, there was a comment earlier about making an exception. And I think exactly the problem is that this is not an exception. They have ticked all the boxes. They're doing this the right way. They're doing it according to our code. And I think they actually would merit, you know, to take some of your concerns to city council about adjusting our daylight ordinance so that the next time somebody has this situation, they are following a set of rules that pushes them in a slightly different direction. That I think we could have had an, you know, the exception that we could have made is earlier in the process, if it was structurally plausible to rotate that around. You know, I get the concern about the, people like the building to have more of a step back and feel less imposing from the street, but it seems like it actually would have probably made the neighbors happier and left the northeastern side of the next door neighbor more sun access if it had been rotated the other direction. But this seems awfully late in the process to force that kind of major structural redesign, you know, that they have followed our code. And so I'm, I don't see that we can really justify entirely, you know, rejecting a permit for it on that basis at this point. I see Commissioner Madden's hand.
Yeah, a question for either Michael or Brandon. Can you show us in the code the, how they're able to get around the daylight plane by picking any side except the critical side? There seems to be a misinterpretation of the code. You don't, when you're on a corner lot, you obviously have two sides where there's nothing, right, in your way. And I, I think the spirit of the daylight plane provisions in most cities is to how you're affecting your neighbor, not how you're affecting the street. And so is there a way you could pull up the language of that part of the code that, you know, there, there?
Yeah, so that's actually, it is not codified. It's in the residential design guideline. And so we can definitely pull that up. But it was the slide in the PowerPoint, so it does say that when doing a second story addition, someone has to comply with either the daylight plane or facade articulation options. That is one area, though, where, you know, as the planning commission, you do have some discretion because the residential design guideline says that has to be, you know, applied as satisfactory to the ARC or the planning commission. You know, so you could authorize for that section to have the other side comply with the daylight plane as well. However, as mentioned, that is, it's not in the code. It's in the residential design guidelines as a one or the other option. But did you want to pull that up, Michael?
Yeah, I was just looking, I can't remember which page it was on. So many, many years ago, I used to design houses. I've probably designed over two hundred houses, doing structures, not architecture. But in almost every city in the Bay Area, you would see this sixteen foot plane at a forty five degree angle. That's at all sides of the house. And this definitely doesn't meet that. So I just want to make sure that we're not doing something here that's in violation of the spirit of the, I guess it's not a code, but the design guideline.
Yeah, so, yeah, so what I've, what I've put up here is, under section three point six point two, it says, "New construction and addition shall conform to either the daylight plane or facade articulation options described below." So the daylight plane option is the first example. And then, you zoom in on that a little bit, it's a little tough to see. Sure, sure.
It looks like they're requiring that twelve feet above the property line be able to see the sun at a forty five degree angle, which is a pretty, it's a fairly reasonable standard, I would think.
Yeah, it's actually more strict than what I've used to see. But my memory could be foggy. I haven't been in a house in fifteen years, but.
Yeah, they, yeah, so then the, so again, there's the two options. The second is the facade articulation option, which basically, you know, allows for the step backs and the setback for the house. So it's, you know, that option is locating second floor walls facing the front property lines at least five feet back from the front wall, setting the side and rear second floor walls setback for three feet of the entire perimeter. So that was what Brandon described. You know, so this particular, the architect chose to use the facade articulation option here, which the design guidelines allow you to do either. But it does not require you to do both, so.
They didn't do that for the entire length of the house, though, on that side, right?
Well, but, yes, but we look, yeah, we look at the perimeter. So we look at the entire perimeter of the house. So if the, if the second story was, you know, proposed to be over the entire house, we would, we look at the entire perimeter of the house. So at least fifty percent of the structure is perimeter, so we look at the perimeter of the entire house.
Even when the house is not on the property line side, the critical side?
Right, correct. So you can even, you can also see in the guidelines, you know, some examples. And you can see the, you know, for example, the blue house on the right-hand side, which is similar to this one, except, you know, without the addition going, you know, over the main portion of the house. But you can see that there are, you know, situations where you do have the higher second wall, the, you know, the orange colored house or terracotta colored house also has, you know, again, uses the second floor step back example or type of style as opposed to the, the other style. And I think, you know, the intent was, was to not necessarily make San Bruno's design guidelines as restrictive as some communities. And I know, you know, I've worked in many communities which have what Commissioner Madden is describing, which is kind of the wedding cake requirement, where it does require that the entire structure be set in from existing side setbacks at a certain, a certain degree. And sometimes applies daylight planes to all sides of the home. So again, San Bruno's guideline are not that restrictive.
Do we have any other remarks on this topic? I guess I'll say for myself that as I said before, I mean, I, I think this merits like putting on the agenda for, and I know that this is a lengthy process and there's a lot of other things going on, but it does seem like daylight access, the daylight plane requirement could stand a rethink to say like, do we want that particular portion of the rule to be, you know, specific to, like rather than having the option of articulation or daylight to actually require a daylight analysis for each side of the house that faces a neighbor. But I think it would be unfair to say that, okay, you followed the guidelines that exist. We're now rewriting the guidelines and making you follow them. I mean, that seems like it has to be something that's a future concern, not, it doesn't seem, you know, fair to somebody who's invested however many thousand dollars in the design work that we, you know, that applies to them if we're changing the rules in midstream.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting we change the rules midstream. I am suggest, I think we should revisit this issue with a future, not requiring someone to do a shadow study, but to apply the rule on the property line where the setback is already violating the norm. It's an existing condition. I get that. But this setback requirement, or the daylight plane requirement, I should say, it's being interpreted extremely liberally, in my opinion. And, you know, it should be on the critical property lines. So I think if there's a way to strengthen that language for future city guidelines or codify it or whatever, I think that's, that would be a wise move. Because I think more and more people are going to start getting solar. And, you know, it doesn't make sense to mess that up for everybody. So that would be my opinion going forward. We should look into that.
Through the chair?
I ask Commissioner Johnson.
I do concur with all the comments. The one thing is just because I've done some recent solar research, when there is something impacting your house, the company will look at other ways for it to be able to, solar to be, it doesn't have to be in one area. It does, they do restructure, move things around to make sure that it happens in it. And ninety nine percent of the times, it is, it is possible to get that solar in. And it's not a one shot only. And so I did quite a bit of study over the last year over it, and it's not limiting.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, you're basically right in general, Commissioner Johnson. But I've been looking at this, that's why I was saying that, you know, if I had been sitting in a meeting much earlier in this process, like I would have suggested that we should make an exception to our rules about the step back along that southeast side in order to leave more insulation of the eastern half of the home to the north. I mean, it really does, to be honest, like just, you know, I mean, without an actual, you know, full diagram like Commissioner Madden was discussing, it's hard to say a hundred percent for certain. But it sure looks like this is going to make a solar system non-viable on that property to the north, that it will fully occlude the roof for too much of the overall time. Which, I mean, you know, like rooftop solar doesn't have to be a hundred percent of roofs. And you can sign up the Peninsula Clean Energy a hundred percent and so on. Like at a neighborhood level, in some ways, it makes sense to, you know, you deploy a mega pack at the substation and you do commercial solar. In some ways, that's cheaper. But it is still like, I think that it merits revisiting. I agree with Commissioner Madden that we should consider in future revising the standards so that there is some kind of daylight requirement on any side that faces a neighbor. But I think that is a topic for the future, rather than a standard. Because I, it just, it does seem unfair to, you know, to force whatever, ten thousand dollars in rework or whatever it is to, on the basis of changing that. Do we have any additional remarks? Oh, I know, I had one more on the safety issues, the sightlines. I have a question for staff, which is whether, so essentially, if the trees along the actual outer corner, where like, you know, if you're trying to make that turn between Fairmont and Clermont, so there are trees marked actually along that outer perimeter of their property against the sidewalk, do we have sort of traffic enforcement standards where if those trees got really bushy and created an actual sightline shoe? I mean, leaving aside the parked cars, which themselves are going to create some, but, is that something where code can compel like, hey, you got to get a, you know, yard service to trim this?
Yes, we, so we have a basic thirty five foot vision triangle to start with. So that's applied at the curb. So basically, nothing over three feet can be within that area. This, I know the way folks have described this, this corner, and I've driven it myself. You know, it is, you know, the concern would be for people trying to turn left if there was, you know, a lot of trees and being able to see around there. But so I mean, one approach would be, you know, first, if the, if the commission wanted to add a condition regarding, you know, an additional staff review of the final landscape plan, we could certainly look at that and the tree varieties. But, you know, in general, the trees, yes, would need to be limbed up so that you could see under them typically that six or seven feet, you know, once they start to grow above that level.
I personally, I didn't feel like we needed an additional condition. I mean, the design intent seems to be that these are trees where it's the canopy is higher up at the choice of the types of trees. But I just want to make sure that if that became a concern, like there's a, you know, hey buddy, you got to trim your trees, that if it actually became a legitimate safety concern and we're having problems with line of sight around there, that we have a mechanism in the future to enforce that.
And through the chair?
Yes, Commissioner Johnson.
And last comment, we're looking at traffic, some of the comments were traffic and visibility. I would, I would just, I wouldn't put a condition by any means, but I certainly put the purpose of staff, that maybe traffic and safety can look at, someone mentioned about cars being parked from corner to corner and they wouldn't be able to see. That maybe traffic and safety take a look at that, and there are ways they can do that. I mean, they can red zone it, they can do a couple of things to avoid some of those things. That's an easier fix, but at least you take a look at it, put it in place to see if there is any concerns with that. It's a very wide corner. I, before the meeting, make a point of looking at it. It's a very, very wide corner. So I didn't appear that there could be, but one never knows. The people that are in the field are the experts, and I will rely on them to take a look at that. Oh, one other thing. I was on Google Earth as we were speaking, and I think one of the gentlemen, one of the speakers indicated there was a swimming pool directly behind. I didn't see that. I did see a pool on the second house behind, but there were trees there, so I couldn't quite tell. And I don't need clarification for that, but I just wanted to know that I couldn't see a pool directly behind the house.
I'll start talking. I'll start talking. Um, yeah, I, I see the pool in the Google Earth and there's a very large tree, um, between it and the house. Um, it looks like the, the leaves are, and the branches are way up above, so you probably could see from the balcony, uh, over to the pool, but you would be staring through some, some tree trunks and whatnot. But I think most of the leaves are up much higher. Um, but yeah, there's a very large tree there. There's a decent sized tree, uh, in the back corner to the neighbor to the north, um, as well.
Yeah. It'd look like there's some good privacy.
Yeah.
I just also, through the chair, I wanna comment that I sit on the architectural review and, and there was compliance in all of the areas. I really do, um, like the changes that were made to the building. I like the balance of, of the way, um, aesthetically it looks and, um, the wraparound port, and there's a lot of, of warm feathers appearance to it. And then that, that step out window with the garage is good balance in the colors and that. Um, there's been some, some good changes to that.
All right, yeah. I mean, I, I will say I, I somewhat regret that this was, that we didn't, um, look at, I, I don't know whether there are other structural concerns or it would raise the cost to implement. I do somewhat regret that we didn't get a chance to look at a version that rotated the whole addition. I, I just, I can't see that as a reason to reject it at this stage in the process of, uh, like if we're, if we are, have exhausted our comments, um, then I think we need to request a, a motion.
I'm gonna be voting no, so I'm not, I'm not gonna put motion on this.
I'm just trying to get to that, just so I can reference the, um.
And just to be clear, the reason I'm voting no is because the drawings and the renders are not accurate to the height changes that were required.
Yeah, I, I think we agreed that we want, whatever our motion is, that we want to include an additional, um, condition of approval, uh, that the lowered height will be implemented. Uh, that any, any documents handed off to contractors will give the correct measurements and that we'll, the, the final product will meet that requirement. And I think the architect was fine with, you know, I mean, that, it's not like that's hard to satisfy. Um, you just need to, you know, make sure the diagrams are all appropriately adjusted.
I hear you, but I, I, I feel strongly that since this is a main feature, we were presented information that was not updated as we asked. And that's why I'm voting no. I don't wanna set a precedent that you just type a number on, on the elevation and you're good to go. And then produce, uh, uh, renders that are not reflecting that change either. So that's why I'm voting no.
Commissioner Madden, would you consider, um, uh, consider, it's fine, I respect your, your decision, um, that they would have to meet that requirement with that, that information before, within that ten day, you know, although it was a ten day appeal process and that, does that change anything for you?
It won't change my vote. It's a good idea, but I won't change my vote.
I, I actually have a, a question for staff that maybe could kind of break this deadlock. Um, would you like, I'm, I'm still, I'm a little concerned around the Brown Act implication of this and I am wondering if it is an option to say we actually defer the vote to the next meeting and allow anybody, so what I'm wondering is, is there a way to say at the next meeting, you only get to speak if you a new participant, if you, if you actually missed this meeting because of the issue? Because it, it is sort of like where the law requires that you get your opportunity to comment. It does not require that you get to come back and, and comment again, but if somebody actually missed it. And, um, and that would give time for a redraw of the rendering as well to satisfy Commissioner Madden's concern. Um, I don't know what the timeline is that the applicant had in mind to build this, whether the additional one month delay is, is really onerous for them. I know, I mean, I don't love the idea, but I, I have been concerned around how this, the, the commenter's point about the zoom link is well made. Um, and so I, I guess I wonder if that is a realistic option.
Yeah, uh, yes, you're, you're certainly wel- welcome to continue the public hearing to, uh, a date specific. And, um, then, you know, with that recommendation, you can, um, also specify, you know, any, any additional items that you wanna see, um, corrected or clarified, um, you know, with the plans. Um, it's a little, um, more challenging to, uh, you know, limit, uh, part of public participation, um, you know, just to those that haven't heard, but, um, you know, you could, um, you know, certainly encourage folks, um, if, if you were to continue it and, and hold another public hearing to, uh, just have folks limit, um, comments to anything that they, you know, had previously raised um, as issues, um, just to try to, um, shorten the public comment time, but, um, uh, you know, we do, if, if you do, uh, continue the public hearing, um, that does, that does mean you have to make the, you know, the item available for public comment. Uh, and that should not be limited, but you, you, you would probably want to limit it to, uh, certainly no more than the three minutes and, and encourage speakers to only discuss items that they did not bring up last time.
And we will, we will have to, to some degree, count on the goodwill and good faith of, uh, the participants, I guess. Um,
Through the chair?
Uh, yes, Mr. Biesodi.
Let me go ahead and dive on that, Corinne. I'm motioning that we forward this to the next commission meeting.
Um, I'm, I'm actually gonna second that myself and I would like to ask, uh, Mr. Wong, uh, if he would be so kind as to adjust those diagrams uh, and perhaps update the foliage along that line as we discussed with the box hedges being replaced with something that would create, you know, either a, um, a standing non-running bamboo or a cypress or something that creates more of a privacy screen, cause that seemed to be a pretty significant concern for people as well.
And I'd also like to add that he do something a little more than that for a shadow study. Uh, I understand what it is, but I, I think for the public's best interest, there was quite a few complaints about that. So if he could do something to provide a better shadow study, that would be great.
And we will make sure that our next, uh, meeting notice carries the correct information.
Yes, so, yeah, we do, do apologize. We've, um, we've switched over to a new, uh, software system called, uh, Prime Gov where everything is uh, entered in, so there, uh, it has been challenging for staff to make sure everything's correct, so we apologize.
And just for the participants, I know people have had their hands up for this. This has consumed a fair amount of our evening and the, the commission does have other business to get to. I do wanna emphasize that if you do come back, we, we really need you to not just repeat the same comments. Um, we do take your concerns very seriously. Um, but, you know, everyone's time, staff's time and the commissioner's time is valuable. Um, do we want a roll call on the motion to continue?
And we need to pick a particular date, too.
That's our, our, our standard next meeting is, ba-ba-ba-ba-ba. It would be the fifteenth of March. March fifteenth, yes.
I'm motioning that we continue to the fifteenth of March.
I will second.
Chair Harmon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Biesodi?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Aye.
Six zero motion passes.
All right, since that was a continuance, there's no appeal involved and we should just move on to our next item, uh, which is six forty-two Pepper Drive. I believe we get a staff presentation from Mr. Wofford.
And I need to recuse myself.
Ah, yes, uh, so Madeline could remove, uh, Commissioner Morgan from the participants' app temporarily.
Hello again, everyone. Can you, uh, see, be in here? Everything okay? Good? Okay. Well, um, hello again. The next item on our agenda is a use permit, an architectural review permit at six four two Pepper Drive. This, uh, proposed project is located on Pepper Drive between Cane's and Cedar Avenue in the Mills Park Five subdivision on a five thousand square foot lot. Uh, first off with the existing conditions at the site. The site is currently developed with a one thousand forty square foot, uh, home with an FAR point two and a lot coverage of twenty-one percent. The current home is three bedrooms and one bathroom shown, the front shown here. And moving along to the proposed project. This project does propose a fourteen hundred and sixty square foot increase for a total size of twenty-five hundred square feet. This would bring the home to have an FAR of point four six and a lot coverage of thirty-five percent. The home would be proposed to have three bedrooms and three and a half bathrooms. So this, um, this set of the plans here shows the upper floor, which would have an expanded kitchen and dining room located in the rear of the home. And, uh, the lower floor, uh, would be expanded also to include a new entertainment room downstairs. Uh, the proposed project is on the cross section, so, um, there are no changes to the front of the home. It would just be, um, an extension towards the back, uh, so that shows an elevation from the downhill side at the top and an elevation from the rear at the bottom. Uh, so as stated, there would be no changes to overall height or to the front facade of the home. And, uh, we did discuss before parking, so I thought I would pull out, um, this section of the municipal code from the parking, which we do, uh, tend to discuss often when it comes to single family home additions. So as, uh, part of the twenty twenty update to the parking code included this caveat. Uh, it included several sections for, um, non-conforming, single-family homes and additions. So, uh, in this subsection of the parking code was for single-family residences with one off-covered parking space, which is what this home has. And item two of this section of the code, um, states that any addition to a single-family home with one covered off parking space, uh, that's over two hundred and fifty square feet shall provide two off-street park spaces, only one of which must be covered. So that was, um, one of the biggest changes from the twenty twenty parking code update that changed to how, um, parking was handled for additions in the past and now. And that concludes, I, I apologize, I thought I included, uh, the table as well for this project, um, but it is also, uh, in the staff report. Um, I guess I, uh, forgot to include that, but that doesn't conclude the presentation for six four two Pepper Drive. Were there any, did anyone want me to go back to any slides or any particular questions before I close the PowerPoint?
I was gonna thank you and I'll ask the mission if there are any, any questions or staff. I see a hand from Commissioner Madden.
Yeah, I, my question is more for the architect. Are, are they present tonight?
I think we're, the tradition is that we, we have questions for staff and then a presentation from the, uh, applicant or architect if present.
Yeah, I'm just not sure if they're here.
Uh, yes, I do see them in the audience.
Should we take our presentation then, since it sounds like that was the only question?
Yeah, I'll hold my question till they're done.
Okay, Madeline, if you could, uh, promote our, uh, presenter.
Madeline, I will, uh, Eugene from Incon Design.
Eugene, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for having me and I'm free, for free to ask any questions that if you may have, I will answer.
Okay, you don't have any separate presentation, just questions?
Yeah, or is there any, would you like a presentation or?
Oh, it's, it's some, some applicants want to bring them. It's up to you. Um, if, if you weren't planning to, then, uh, Commissioner Madden could just proceed with his question.
Or I have one prepared.
Commissioner Madden?
Okay, uh, yeah, I'm not sure if you were present at the last, or at the ARC commission, but I expressed some concerns about the roof design and drainage. And, uh, from what I can tell, I don't think they've been addressed. Um, and it looks like the problem's maybe getting worse now the more I look at this. Um, so what I'm seeing is you're basically doing a hip roof in the back to match the hip roof in the front. But you're not, from what I can tell, adding any downspouts for the new roof. And you've got the cricket in the middle that will spill out to the left and right on the plan, not connected to any downspouts. And you're losing the existing downspout in the upper left corner of the old roof by doing this. So I have some concerns about the water shedding that will happen on this property and potentially the neighbor's property. And then by not adding downspouts, you're going to create a, a, actually a noise issue with the water kind of falling twenty-five feet or so and splattering on the ground. So can you address the roof drainage issues? Cause it seems like you're, you're choosing, uh, a cheap way to frame the roof versus, um, a smart way to drain the roof.
Yes, so, um, I was here for the previous, uh, meeting and I remember your concerns. And we can have updates of plans, uh, for downspouts, so we can update where the downspouts could be proposed. As well as, um, we are going to add, uh, roof crickets, so to help address the sloping of the drainage. So it will be directed onto the subject property or the public driveway and away from, uh, the neighbors. Because, um, we have another project that's very similar to this design and once we got to the, the building review, they required more information regarding how it's gonna be drained as well as, uh, what we adding. So as this, and once we pass the planning basis, uh, building review as well for drainage as well and it won't, and their main issue is not the back, uh, not the, uh, 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 rainwater not directing it to, uh, the adjacent property. So they will look into this as well. So, uh, we just didn't update the location of any roof gutters and as well as the roof crickets.
Well, I, I know they're going to check it for that, but have you thought about what you're going to do?
Yes, so.
Time you said internal drain.
Yeah.
I would strongly advise you not to do that. It's very noisy, the option of the house, number one, but also it doesn't have anywhere to go once you get down to the basement or down to the crawl space. So it's hard to inspect. It's hard if it's blocked, it's hard to fix, all those things.
Um, yeah, so the, the, uh, owners aware, uh, are designer doing internal drains as well, uh, when it's being directed back to a public way. uh, when it's being directed back to a public way.
Okay, I, I'm not clear what that means, but, um, okay.
Uh, Commissioner Lethen?
Yeah, hi, um, I am only really just reviewing this, um, these drawings because, um, they were absent from the first staff packet. Um, so forgive me for sounding a little slow. Um, am I right in seeing that, that, the roof as, I, I did not sit on the, the arc review, so this is all brand new. Um, the roof on the existing building is basically going to remain and you're putting an addition on but not replacing the roofing structure from the first. And you're kind of putting this little, I've never heard of a cricket before. Um, but you're basically putting on a mini roof on the new structure and putting kind of this little dr- drain that's in this funny little valley. It, it looks, I have never seen anything like this and it looks really unusual to me. And if I were a neighbor peeking in on this, I would be not delighted to, um, to, to see something like this. It really looks kind of patched together and, and a little suspect. So I guess my question for the applicant is why the roof is designed this way? Because it's so unusual?
Um, so the roof was designed this way just to keep like the, the original look of the house basically the same. Because if we take out the whole roof and, uh, put a new roof over the whole entire building, it would change the overall height and slope of the roof. So we want to minimize the overall, uh, look from the front of the house. And once you get towards the rear, it would match the same basically slope and elevations of the original building.
Okay, uh, so the front, from the front, the precise front and the precise rear, it will look original. But from the sides, it's going to have this regular roof.
Yeah.
Mini roof profile.
Yeah, that's correct. So a- and as you get towards, or from the street side, you would not really see it too much because it's more towards the rear of the building.
Right, okay, thank you.
Do we have any other, um, questions from the commission? Not see any hands. All right, in that case, uh, should we move on to asking if there is any public comment?
I do not see any hands, Chair.
All right, do we have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Give a second.
I'll second.
Great, and a roll call, please.
Chair Harmon?
Aye.
Vice Chair Madden?
Aye.
Commissioner Biassodi? Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan is recused. Five zero motion passes.
All right, um, do we have any additional conversation or questions for staff? Um, it seemed like that issue with the roof was the only thing that was, people were concerned with. Um, having dealt with some drainage issues on my own property, I know, you know, avoiding water damage, it's a, it's a big deal. Um, and, uh, having odd shapes in your roof, you definitely need to route the water out of those properly. But I think, uh, you know, if staff has analyzed it and is satisfied that it's not going to impact the neighboring property in particular, then, uh, you know, that's sort of the, the key question.
Question for staff, can we mandate that these roof drains get ex- uh, extra scrutiny and that they get hard-connected so they daylight at the sidewalk? Um, these, this, this roof design is just, I, I'm not meaning to offend this architect, it's wrong. It's just wrong and it shouldn't be this way. And I don't want the neighbors coming back to us saying, you know, the excess water is messing up my foundation and, and whatnot. And, and I think that the, the house, the number of downspouts going to need here to make this work is going to be excessive as well. So if there's a way we can make the building department really check this out, um, if he wants to go with this roof, it's his prerogative, I guess it meets all the requirements, but it, it's just, it, it shouldn't be this way. If we're trying to save a few bucks and it might be causing more, more, more issues down the road. So if there's a way we can put that stipulation in there when we vote, I would really appreciate it.
Through the chair, I have a question for the architect. Uh, which one of these drawings shows your downspouts on this?
Um, um, we didn't put, uh, our elevations are not up to date with, from the previous, uh, architecture meeting of the new, where the downspouts are going to be.
Got it, got it. So considering the fact that we didn't vote on the last one and we continued it because of notifications, I think we should continue this one too and put those drawings together the right way.
Well, yeah, and I, I was more concerned about the previous one because it did seem like a matter of contention where there could be, you know, a legal action over it from the commenters. Then I was, you know, I would personally be comfortable voting on this one, but I'm, if, if somebody wants to make a motion that we continue this one as well, then we can vote on that. Do we have such a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we continue this one on the condition that the drawings be updated to show all the drainage from the roof. Um, meaning downspouts on the new and existing portions of the roof, the crickets, and some kind of acknowledgement that they will be, um, draining to the street and not to the neighbor's property. Through a, either a hard connection that goes below any sidewalks or something like that. Um, that would be my motion. And I'll second that.
All right, we motioned a second, we should call, uh, a roll call.
Chair Harmon?
Uh, nay.
Chair Madden? Vice Chair Madden, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Commissioner Biassodi?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen?
Aye.
Continuance passes.
All right then, we will discuss this, uh, at a later date, uh, March fifteenth. Uh, thank you for your time, uh, sorry, I missed your last name, Eugene. That closes our hearing on this topic and we should proceed to find my agenda again. Uh, our housing element presentation, I believe. Uh, Mr. Smith? Thank you for bringing back Commissioner Morgan.
Can everyone see the screen?
All right, yes, Michael, thank you.
All right, uh, good evening, Chair Harmon, members of the commission, uh, Michael Smith, planning department staff. Today, we're going to go over, or tonight, we're going to go over what we're doing on the housing element. So, um, tonight's agenda will begin with a background on the hu- housing element process and move on to an overview of the city's RENA, which is Regional Housing Needs Allocation, and staff's recommendation for how the city can accommodate the, the RENA allocation. Uh, discussion will then shift to housing policies, which includes policies regarding affirmatively fer- furthering for housing, or AFFH. And we'll have a brief discussion about the Housing Trust Fund, rezonings, and public outreach. And we then close the presentation by going over the schedule we have put together for the housing element. And just so you know, this is a similar presentation that staff gave to the, the council last, um, last month. So the city of San Bruno has started a process to update its housing element for the eight-year planning, eight-year planning period, which is from twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one. This is also known as the sixth cycle. Uh, we're currently in the fifth cycle. And this is directed by HCD, um, that's the State Department of Housing for the state of California Community Development. Um, the city has adopted the housing element in twenty fifteen, which covers the current cycle. Um, and that goes from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-three. A housing element is a plan for developing more housing and reducing barriers to housing production. It is one of the eight required elements for a city's general plan. It is required by state law and must be updated every eight years. Cities don't create housing, but they are required to designate feasible sites and create policies that address community needs. The key components of the housing element include an analysis of communities' housing needs and the constraints to housing production, identification of potential housing sites that can feasibly be developed to satisfy the scene, uh, city's RENA allocation, identification of new housing policies and programs that support the development of housing, and the public outreach process. At the end of the process, the plan must be reviewed and, and approved by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. The housing element will include demographic information to provide background and setting. Staff wanted to share some of this information, some of the highlights of this information with you, um, for, for our city. So first off, the ci- uh, San Bruno's population has been growing at a rate that is greater than the county as a whole, with the population growth up about thirteen percent in the city from two thousand to twenty, to two thousand and twenty, compared to nine percent for the overall county. However, it has grown at a rate below that for the overall Bay Area, which is at fifteen percent growth. San Bruno was estimated to have a population of forty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-four in twenty twenty. Now a little about income. Uh, San Bruno has a slightly higher percentage of lower-income households than most of the county and region, with forty-four percent of households earning less than eighty percent of area median income, compared to forty percent of households in San Mateo County overall and thirty-nine percent of households in the Bay Area as a whole. Housing tenure, in San Bruno, there are a total of fifteen thousand sixty-three housing units. And fewer residents own their homes, uh, excuse me, and fewer residents rent than own their homes. So we have forty-one point one percent are renting and fifty-eight point nine percent own their homes. And what's happening with the home prices? Well, while housing prices in San Bruno are lower than the county as a whole, uh, they are still unaffordable to most residents and workers. Given high job growth and low housing growth in the county, uh, the cost of housing in San Bruno has increased significantly in the past decade. In twenty twenty, the average sales price of a single-family home in San Bruno was approximately one point two million. Uh, and that's an increase of a hundred and sixteen percent between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty. And, uh, you know, we're already in twenty-twenty-two now and I'm sure the prices have continued to go up since, since, uh, this data was, uh, tabulated. And what's happening with the rental prices? They have increased by sixty-six percent between two thousand nine and, uh, two thousand nineteen. The median rent in twenty nineteen was twenty-two hundred and forty dollars in San Bruno. To rent a typical apartment, a household would need to make nearly ninety thousand dollars per year. And just so you know, on the slides here is a couple of, uh, our San Bruno projects that we, uh, approved over the last, uh, few years. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, AKA HUD, considers housing to be, um, affordable for households if they, if the household spends less than thirty percent of its income on housing costs. A household is considered cost-burdened if it spends more than thirty percent of its monthly income on housing costs. While those who spend more than fifty percent of their income on housing costs are considered severely cost-burdened. In San Bruno, twenty point three percent of households spend thirty to fifty percent of their income on housing, while seventeen point two percent of households are severely cost-burdened and use the majority of their income for housing. The, this slide shows the different income categories for San Mateo County, uh, with the corresponding family size. And so this is, uh, what we call the area median income table, um, that, that we use for, for, for the county. And this is specific to the county and not to the city. So everyone in this, uh, the county is using the same numbers. Now, uh, we're going to go and, uh, talk a little bit about the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA. It is the state mandate that all California jurisdictions must plan for the housing needs of its residents, regardless of income. As part of RENA, the California Department of Housing and Urban De- and Community Development uh, determines the total number of new homes the Bay Area needs to build and how affordable those homes need to be in order to meet the housing needs of the people at all income levels. The Association of Bay Area Governments, uh, AKA ABAG, working with, um, the Housing Methodology Committee, then distributes a share of the region's housing needs to each city, town, and county in the region. Each local government must then update the housing element of its general plan to show the locations where housing can be built and the policies and strategies necessary to meet the community's housing needs. For the current RENA cycle, which is twenty fifteen to twenty-three, to twenty twenty-three, excuse me, San Bruno's allocation was eleven hundred and fifty-five, uh, dwelling units. This table shows the city's progress towards meeting its current allocation. Since the beginning of this cycle, building permits were issued for two hundred and three new housing units, with a re- remaining obligation of nine hundred and fifty-two housing units. So although the city has, hasn't really achieved much of its RENA, only eighteen percent, it is worth noting that the city entitled over fifty-eight percent of its RENA allocation. And so that's not shown here, cause that's not what HCD is, is interested in. But I just wanted you guys to know that we have entitled fifty-eight percent of our RENA allocation. The adoption of the TCP in twenty thirteen created development opportunity for up to sixteen hundred and ten new housing units in the city. To date, the city has entitled approximately five hundred and eighty-one residential units within the TCP, of which eighty-three units, which is located at four hundred San Mateo Avenue, have been constructed. Another four hundred and ninety-eight units are pending building permit issuance. And this includes such projects as Mills Park, one-eleven San Bruno, and five hundred Sylvan Ave- Avenue. All of the four hundred and ninety-eight pending units within the TCP would count towards the upcoming sixth cycle, um, because they will not complete construction by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. This unit total includes the proposed SB thirty-five project at, uh, seven thirty-two to seven forty El Camino, which was submitted for review September of twenty twenty-one and would account for an additional one hundred and thirty-six units. Continued residential build-out of the TCP alone, which anticipates up to sixteen hundred and ten units, would not be enough to satisfy the city's sixth-cycle RENA requirement. However, it should be noted that the projects within the TCP area may seek density bonuses or concessions, which may result in the development of more, more units on each site. So now we're going to take a look at what we were allocated in this current cycle that we're about to enter into. Or, excuse me, not the current cycle, but this, the cycle that we're about to enter into. So, and that's the sixth cycle. Um, we've been allocated three thousand one hundred and sixty-five units. So if you look back at the previous slide, we said eleven hundred and fifty-five. And so now we're at thirty-one hundred and sixty-five units. So this is a very substantial increase over the previous cycle. When planning for how to meet the RENA requirement, HCD recommends an additional buffer. When planning for how to meet the RENA requirement, HCD recommends an additional buffer. The table includes, uh, the table on the screen right now includes an estimate of the total number of housing units with a buffer of fifteen percent added to RENA allocation. This buffer is an important component of housing planning, and that it allows for case-by-case decision-making on individual projects that may include fewer housing units than anticipated, and it ensures that an adequate supply of how, sites is provided throughout the entire planning period, especially for satisfying, uh, lower-income RENA numbers. The buffer is essential to assure compliance with the state's no-net-loss legislation, which became effective in 2019 under SB one sixty-six. No-net-loss means that any site designated for housing by the city should be developed as housing, or an alternate site, site should be designated for housing elsewhere at the time the site is developed for an alternative use. And this, uh, and also on this chart, you can see, going, going back to the AMI that we mentioned on the, uh, previous slide, you can see wh- how our RENA allocation is broken up by AMI. Um, so we have the very low, low, moderate, and then these are the market rate column right here, and then you have your total. Now we're going to take deeper dive into staff's recommend, recommendations for how to accommodate the city's RENA allocation. This table is a summary of staff's recommendation for how the city could accommodate its RENA allocation by project type. So we've identified that we have six hundred and eighty-six pipeline projects. Um, that includes projects both in the TCP and outside the TCP. We've identified another seven hundred and fifty-two units within the TCP area that we think can be developed on, on sites. Um, we have the Tanfran area, um, which is, I'm sure you guys have, um, read the news lately. We, uh, a new buyer, uh, has purchased that site, and, um, if you're familiar with the envisioning Tanfran document that the city put out and has on the website, uh, the city is, um, looking at a minimum of a thousand units at that site. Um, then we have single-family area and infill, and that includes, uh, the, the many school sites that we have, uh, such as Crestmore and Engvall, um, among other, um, small development areas, and so we're estimating about four hundred and forty-two units there. Um, accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, three hundred and forty-five, and this is based, uh, again, over the next eight years, and this is based upon the, the big uptick we've had in ADU, um, approvals, um, over the past two years since, uh, state law changed. And then we have the Bay Hill specific plan at four hundred and fifteen units, which is, uh, which, was just approved, um, sorry, not the units were just approved, but the plan was just approved, um, in 2021. And that brings us to our total of three thousand, three hundred and forty units, and that's our RENA, including the fifteen percent buffer. According to HCD, development projects that have either been approved, issued a building permit, or received a certificate of occupancy since the beginning of the RENA projection period may be credited toward meeting the RENA allocation based on the affordability and unit count of the development. These projects are considered pipeline projects. The projection period is the time period for which the re- regional housing need is calculated. The projection period for the sixth cycle is June thirtieth, 2022, to December thirty-first, 2030. Identifying which projects that can be credited towards the RENA sixth-cycle RENA is important in determining the remaining number of units, uh, that we have to plan for in order to meet our total RENA allocation. Staff has evaluated our pipeline projects that could count towards the sixth cycle of RENA, and for purposes of identifying the pipeline projects, staff not only considered the, the anticipated status of the project as of June thirtieth, 2022, um, but also whether the site was included as part of the prior housing element. According to this methodology, we have six hundred and eighty-six, uh, units. And so what you see here is a breakdown of some of the projects that have come before you over the, um, past few years, and more recently, uh, two seventy-one, I think, was approved in 2021. That came before you not that long ago, but these are the projects that you see that aren't built, but the units that we've, um, um, entitled or approved. So staff conducted a city-wide site inventory and review of existing land-use densities and zoning regulations, and a preliminary analysis indicates the city will need to rezone several sites to meet its RENA allocation for the sixth cycle. Rezoning would include the allowance for proposed housing at Tanfran, as we, we discussed earlier with a thousand units, where housing is not currently a permitted use. So, so right now, housing is not permitted on the Tanfran site. And, uh, one thing I did forget to mention, um, is that the Tanfran site, to, to do housing on that site will require an override, um, because pursuant to the ALUCP for the San Francisco, um, International Airport, uh, housing is not a permitted, uh, use at that site. And so this app kinda shows you how we're looking at distributing, uh, the units, um, throughout the city, um, to meet, to meet, to meet our RENA allocation. And for the, for the Tanfran site, which is where the biggest number of units in one area is projected to be, uh, we will be doing a master planning process for the Tanfran, and that will start in the coming months. In addition to Tanfran, um, some other notable sites, um, include Ingval, uh, Crestmore High School, um, one seventy San Bruno, which is one of the vacant lots across from the Cal Train Station, um, a few sites within Bay Hill, uh, eight forty, uh, San Bruno Avenue, eight fifty El Camino Real, um, which is the vacant lot where the hotel used to be, um, seven fifty El Camino Real, uh, which I believe is the Melody Toyota Site, uh, three hundred El Camino Real, and five ninety El Camino Real. Um, density for these sites was calculated based on, uh, density of projects already approved and nearby, but more conservatively. Evaluating the current sites inventory list, density was calculated very conservatively with TCP sites at fifty dwelling units per acre. Um, real-world densities in many cases, as staff found out after doing some research, were actually fifty to a hundred percent higher than what staff had estimated back in 2015, um, when they were calculating, um, potential densities for that site. So I'll say that again. So what they did in 2015 was they looked at all the T- TCP sites they had put on the, um, sites inventory list, and they just calculated them all at a, a base, uh, fifty dwelling units per acre. But in actuality, um, such sites that came forward, such as Mills Park and One-Eleven, which I think I have a slide later on to kinda show you, and it, and it compares, you can kinda see for yourself how, what staff estimated and what we actually got, and what, what the increase was. And here's that slide. So, um, again, so staff did some research, and you can see here that, um, in our pre, in our current, excuse me, I should say current, in our current housing element, we estimated that One-Eleven San Bruno, for instance, would get thirty-two dwelling units. In actuality, it got approved at sixty-two dwelling units, and that was without a density bonus, and that was a difference of forty-nine percent. Um, and then we have Mills Park, it was estimated at one ninety-five, we actually got, uh, four twenty-seven, and then so forth and so on, some of these numbers get a little bit closer, um, you know, twenty-one to twenty-three, um, this is the, the Skyline College project at thirty-three hundred college, we estimated seventy-five, we got seventy, so that was one of the few that actually came in lower. And then we have one seventy San Bruno, which is a project we're currently reviewing, so, but this is a, a big increase. We estimated twelve, and, um, we're getting forty-two. So, so clearly developers are, are finding ways to get more housing on the sites than even we anticipated. So what we're estimating for the, for our sites inventory now is that, um, we're, we're going based upon what developers are telling us, and we're putting those numbers in instead of just using a, a base number of like fifty units per acre or something like that. Um, now we're gonna talk a little bit about the, the housing policy side. So the housing element is not just a list of sites, it's also housing policies about, um, policies that can help, help people find housing. The large portion of the next housing element update will focus on various goals, programs, and policies to encourage the development of housing, and ways to improve access to housing units. The next housing element update will review existing programs and consider additional measures along with a timetable to implement these policies. Programs and policies in the existing housing amount, house, housing element are organized under six goals, and staff anticipates that many of the existing goals and policies will be carried through to the updated housing element. A summary table of all those existing goals and policies, uh, is attached to the staff report as attachment number three, for reference, in case you're just interested in seeing what kinda policies were the, were developed in the past, and, um, it probably get, get you thinking about what you'd like to see in the future. Um, staff is working with, um, twelve, twenty-one elements in the weeks ahead to consider new goals and policies to incorporate into the draft housing element. In fact, I think we have a meeting tomorrow. So prior to drafting specific new goals and policies, staff, um, wanted to make sure, um, that this, that the commission just simply saw what we have already, and just, um, make aware of the requirement. A new component of the housing element update will be the discussion on how goals and policies can affirmatively further fair housing, or AFFH. This is something you're gonna hear a lot. Um, this was, uh, passed in 2018, um, Assembly Bill Six Eighty-Six. The requirement of, uh, affirmatively further, furthering fair housing is, includes an assessment of fair housing practices, an analysis of the relationship between available sites and areas of high or low resources in a community, and adopting programs to affirmatively further for house, fair housing. Essentially, it is a thoughtful review of how to improve neighborhoods within the city based, based on these factors. For San Bruno, new investment in housing close to transit and jobs, particularly in the transit corridors area, is in alignment with AFFH goals. In general, San Bruno's higher-resourced neighborhoods are located in the hills on the west side of the city. The most under-resourced neighborhoods in San Bruno are located east of El Camino Real. And I, as I said, staff is currently working with our outside consultant to, um, work on those policies, and will be bringing them to the community within the next, uh, few Staff will also be including new implementation policies in the housing element update for the city's Housing Trust Fund. San Bruno currently has a balance of approximately three point nine million dollars in its Housing Trust Fund, um, and is anticipating receiving millions more, uh, as a result of the YouTube project that was approved last year, which included a development agreement. This critical mass of funds represents an opportunity for the city to de- to deploy the resource, the resources to assist the community's housing needs. Planning staff will be issuing a request for a proposal, uh, to housing consultants, uh, in 2022, within the next few months, to select a consultant who can assist staff with developing a program for the use of those housing funds. Policy and program suggestions currently being considered by staff include the following, um, well, well, let me see. Well, the complete list of Housing Trust Fund policies are attached to the staff report and, and, uh, but they fall into a few broad categories. Um, so we have monitoring fees to more closely monitor the units we have, and the many more we anticipate in the future. Um, there's the ones that fall under developing affordable housing by providing land or loans, um, for, for affordable housing. There's the ones that fall under the category of rehabilitation and preservation of existing affordable homes and apartments, housing assistance, which comes in the form of rental assistance or, uh, for lower-income residents, and social services to allow people to stay at homes, such as transportation and home care, and other special services for people with special needs. So this is an area that, again, we, we have the money, and now we need, uh, you know, we need some assistance for how we can better use that money, uh, so this, especially since we're expecting more, uh, so we can help the community and their, and their housing The city can include policies within the eight-year housing element timeframe to consider land-use studies and possible changes to increase the number of housing units in the city. One possible study is increased hu- heights and other development standards outside the transit corridors plan area, specifically the portion of El Camino Real from San Mateo Avenue, which is within the TCP, all the way down to the Millbrae border. So it, for, in case you don't know, that, that portion of San Bruno along El Camino Real to the Millbrae border still has a fifty-foot height limit and a three-story limit. Um, and, but it was rezoned, uh, last year, um, but a possible, it would be possible within the housing element to maybe evaluate whether or not, uh, we wanna loosen the development standards in that area to in- increase the height. Uh, another area we can take a look at within this housing element is the Town Center, um, right next to, uh, Tanfran Mall. Um, this shopping center has a couple of, uh, uses along the El Camino Real frontage, um, with a lot of parking, um, you know, perhaps we can take a look and see whether or not we can start to introduce housing along that El Camino Real frontage. And, um, going back to the whole El Camino thing, so you know that in spring of 2021, um, the city did approve, uh, the mixed-use zoning along El Camino Real, and so that opened up housing, uh, to that area, uh, down to the Millbrae border, but we still do have that, that limitation on the number of floors, uh, and we do also have a density limit there as well. Uh, to date, the, um, the only project I believe that we have in that general area of the city, uh, for housing was the two seventy-one El Camino Real. Um, and in, and in talking to, uh, developers, staff has seen that there is a desire to see more height there and more number of floors, to make, uh, to make the residential Now we're gonna talk a little bit about the public outreach, uh, that we're doing as part of the housing element update and that we intend to do. Uh, so we started process, um, for, for the public outreach, um, and this is a key part, portion of the housing element update. So we're working with Twenty-One Elements, and that's our, uh, consultant, and, and we've established a website for use by all jurisdictions and, and the county called Let's Talk Housing, and we promote that on our own city website as well, and have a lot of information there. Um, eventually, this, uh, presentation that I'm giving to you now will probably make it up on the webpage as well. It has lots of resources. Um, and then the consultant has also helped, uh, put together a number of, um, meetings for staff to, um, encounter different people in the sphere of hu- of housing. So on, um, April eighth, uh, twenty twenty-one, San Bruno partnered with Twenty-One Elements to hold a workshop that introduced the housing element process to the community, uh, and so that was one of the ones we had open. And then from October through December of 2021, uh, Twenty-One Elements and the city hosted, uh, a series of meetings, uh, for, um, first one being why affordability matters, next one being housing and racial equity, uh, next one was housing and the climate of change, and then the last one was putting it all together. In addition to those meetings, Twenty-One Elements hosted a series of meetings to collect housing needs information from service providers and community members for, for staff to use in drafting the housing element, as well as gathering community comments on fair housing issues. In December of 2021, the city promoted a survey directed to individuals who have or have had challenges affording or maintaining housing, um, and we are expecting to get the results from that survey back within this month. And then between the September and, uh, November of 2021, Twenty-One Elements hosted the, um, listening sessions between jurisdiction staff and stakeholder organizations focused on housing issues. Staff was able to listen and learn from fair housing organizations, housing advocacy organizations, housing developers, and service providers about some of the housing issues they are seeing in San Mateo County. The meetings introduced staff to organizations that are dealing firsthand with trying to house people. And then staff will be doing more public engagement activities over the next few months to supplement the outreach that I discussed, that I've already discussed, that we're doing through our consultants. And we're hoping to get more input on the types of policies, programs the community needs to provide housing for all San Bruno residents. The outreach will primarily be conducted remotely using an, and using online The outreach will primarily be conducted remotely and using online surveys and virtual meetings, but staff is assessing the possibility of possibly trying to engage stakeholders in person if the pandemic allows. So now I'm just gonna show briefly what the schedule looks like. So on the slide now is the schedule that we put together for the housing element. You can see we're still here in the red bar. This is what we have left in front of us, which is pretty much the rest of this year. And we need to get it to HCD right here at the end in this red bar by January 31st of 2023, and that's at the end. We actually have to give it to them before then so that they can review it and take a few months and then provide comments, and so it is a lengthy process. We are expecting to get comments. They've added a lot of new requirements to the housing element this year. Southern California and the San Diego region have already gone through this process. Not that many cities were able to get their housing elements adopted first time around. So we are, you know, we're in it, we're trying to do our best to represent the city, do good work, make sure that our housing element is top-notch, and... Yeah, so that kind of brings me towards the end. Does anyone have any questions or want me to go back to a slide before I turn, before I log out or take it off the screen?
Do we have any particular questions? I know I have at least one, but I will give my fellow commissioners an opportunity.
Did the chair?
Oh, yeah. Commissioner Johnson.
Just a question of interest here. When you talk about on the southern end of El Camino, consider revisiting the site limits. You know, I just find it so interesting, now that we can change any of this, but on the east side, it's San Bruno all the way down to Santa Clara, I believe, and on the west side of El Camino, it's Milbrae, starting from sort of the Milbrae furniture place it used to be there. You know, it's really a, it's just the way it was, you know, lay of the land way back in the time, it's the way it is. But just any thought to, any discussion around that? Is there anything you need to think about? My business, my building is right on Santa Inez, which is right on the borderline of Milbrae, San Bruno, and quite frankly, people think it's Milbrae because the Milbrae sign starts north of my building, but it really isn't. San Bruno continues all the way down to Jose's little shopping strip mall. Can't think of his last name offhand.
Montez.
Montez, yeah.
Yeah.
His little strip mall goes all the way, you know, down, I think, to Santa Clara. So anyway, we'd be interested in any feedback you have, if any.
So I think what you were talking about is how when you're on El Camino Real, one side is in San Bruno and the other side is in Milbrae. Yeah, I mean, we do talk to our peers in Milbrae and coordinate with them on what we are proposing to do. Right now, as far as looking at that corridor and increasing heights, it's not something that we'll be necessarily proposing in the housing element, but it's something that can be looked at as a program to evaluate in the eight-year cycle of the housing element. So, yeah.
Right, because, I mean, in reality, you're talking about the south end of San Bruno and adjacent to Milbrae, and my goodness, we are definitely, it's not even like there's a property line, it's just across the street.
Yeah.
So it's really an awkward situation. Thanks.
Yeah, Michael, I have a long list here. I just want to make sure that whatever studies you guys are doing or hiring people to do on behalf, they're considering these things. I'm pretty sure they are, but just for the record. I'm assuming the population is gonna go up quite a bit once all these things get built, and that means more people, and we need more, will we need more schools? Will we need more fire stations, more police stations, and an upgrade of the infrastructure of the city for sewer and water, those type of things? I assume there'll be a traffic study involved, especially, I'm always weary of these projects where we're gonna put a ton of housing and no car parking. It sounds great, we have transportation all around, but people still want to have a car, they don't want to live in a place where they can't park, so I'm assuming we're gonna be seeing a lot of proposals where there's very little parking relative to the number of units. I think the height limit is something citywide that would obviously need to be revisited. I think you mentioned it several times, but we need to balance that. You know, no one wants a bunch of shadows, we get that, but we also want to try and maintain some or create open space as well, and, you know, and to pencil these projects out financially, you know, they need to keep the footprints as tight as they can, and that means they have to go up vertically. So I think that's something that definitely needs to get looked at. I also have a question about, you know, are we looking to maximize properties that can be purchased versus rentals, or is there any rules to that ratio, or are we gonna let these developers just build huge structures with tons of studio apartments in them? Is there any kind of, you know, rules to that that we need to, you know, put in there? And then, just the last one is, again, going back to population, is how many children do we expect to occupy these new places? Again, because, you know, schools, you know, I think we've closed some schools recently. Will we need to find new locations or reopen them? I think we may be selling off, or the district may be selling off those school properties, and we build all these places, all these homes, and then we have more kids, and where will they go to school? So I'm not sure if the study can get that precise to predict how many adults versus kids would be moving into San Bruno, but that's kind of just my laundry list there that I thought of.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot there. So let me talk a little bit about the schools aspect of it. So for every project, we do coordinate with the schools. You know, we're required by law, I believe, to send them our tentative maps, and that gives them an idea of what is being proposed as far as housing development in the city, and that happens regardless of housing element or not. Now, we don't necessarily meet with school, district, staff to discuss that unless they ask us, you know, that they want to meet with us, but we do give them the information, and then their people evaluate it, and then they evaluate their infrastructure needs on their end to kind of address that. So that's one. I just want to make sure that you knew that that was happening and that there is that internal coordination. Staff doesn't have control over the process, but the flow of information is there. Let me see, the height limit, so we're not proposing any zoning changes at this time with the housing element, with the exception of the Tanfran and possibly some other areas that might be, let me see, north of 380. So most of what you see kind of in the TCP area is, you know, it's a great plan, we already have the height limits we need, and so now we're just waiting and working with developers on getting those projects through the process. And so we're leaning on the TCP quite a bit for more housing. And then there's like the little pockets here and there within the hills, such as the Crestmore School Site and the Engvall School Site. Those are already, you know, those are R1, and so they're gonna be developed at eight units per acre, and so there's really no, up to eight units per acre, I should say. So there's really no change in those places, other than the use would turn over and be Remind me of some of your other questions you had?
Yeah, just, I'm assuming the studies will take into consideration, you know, we are talking about schools, but, you know, fire stations, police stations, infrastructure, and traffic. You know, I'm guessing if the city is growing by ten to fifteen percent population, I'm throwing a number out there, not sure if that's the real number, but that means we need more fire stations, we need more police stations, and we need more police officers and firefighters. Those all come with, you know, costs and tax implications, and then I just have a general concern that we build all this stuff and then they remain empty because they're still either unaffordable, or they don't have parking, and they take a long time to get rented out or sold. I don't know if that's a trend that's been happening, when things get built and then they don't get occupied right away because the cost is still too high, or there's some other issue with, okay, my kid's gotta walk forty-five minutes to a school because there's not a school nearby, this new thing we've just developed. All those kind of things are kind of what I'm worried about.
I see, yeah. So to talk a little about the transportation aspect or the traffic, we are doing an environmental analysis. We're starting off with an initial study, and there will be studies to see if we have the sewer capacity and water capacity, and they will be analyzing the traffic as well as that. That is something that is happening in kind of in the background of what staff is doing on the front end, and we're providing that information to our environmental consultants to make sure that that is being analyzed, and along with that is the other services that we need, which would include the police and fire as well, so that would be included in the environmental document. The parking, we're not proposing any parking changes at this time. I mean, things are still in flux, and if that's the direction we receive, you know, that is something we will definitely take a look at. But at the state level, what we're noticing is that projects are coming in for review, and they're using state-level policies to provide less parking, especially if they're within the TCP area, because most of that is within a half mile of the Caltrain Station or the Barge Station. And so those projects are coming in with less parking, and, I mean, that's what the state allows, and so there's not much we can do there, but we aren't necessarily thinking of changing that as part of the housing element.
For the very large developments like Tanfran, potentially, are we, should we be anticipating things like pedestrian bridges to cross over El Camino, or, again, I'm thinking about kids that have to walk to school and, you know, you have a very busy street there and whatnot, so...
You know, who say, I don't know what exactly will come from the Tanfran, you know, you know, specific planning process or master planning process, I'm assuming. That's gonna be its own thing that's kind of happening to the site, and so I think those are some of the things that they'll look at and think about as they're developing those rules for how that site is going to be developed, but the housing element is probably up a few levels from there, and so it's more of a high-level policy document. It's not gonna get down into those details about how sites are specifically developed in that nature.
Did the chair? It prompted some questions to ask Commissioner Madden while speaking. You know, certainly studies will take into consideration so many expansions of thinking here, but the millennials and Gen Z are very different thinkers. You know, they're really much more tuned in to ecology and rights, and, I mean, just many, many new ways of thinking, and transportation is not a priority for them. It's interesting, and parents in today's world are not letting their children walk to school. And so it's just even just thinking of traffic flow and more parents will be, you know, they're already driving, I mean, I've seen that for the last ten, fifteen years, quite honestly, and it will even be more so in the future. So I just find it so interesting to think about the planning stages and what needs to be thought behind the scenes to make, to bring all these kind of pieces together. You have to bring so many different types of experts into it to get their thinking, to get their points of view so that planning can take place for it all. There's a lot to think about.
Do you have any other hands? Or I have my own set of considerations, comments?
Well, we need to ask, will you want any slides from the slideshow?
Yeah, there was, if you go back, there was a particular slide, and I think this is just a typo, it's basically, I think it's a minor issue, but I don't have the number of the slide, but there was the buffer, basically. I know my recollection is that we presented a ten percent buffer at council, and council said maybe we should bump that up to fifteen, which is more in line with the HCD guidance, and it looks like that was done, which I really appreciate because I shared council's thoughts on that. But if you go back, maybe one or two more? Oh, I guess I'm wrong, maybe it was four words, one. Where did it go? There it is, yes. See, that still says ten percent buffer, and I think that's just a typo there. I think you actually did change the numbers to be fifteen and just didn't update that heading.
Yeah, thank you for pointing out. I'll definitely make that change.
Okay, yeah, that's just, I saw that ten percent, and I was like, wait a minute, didn't we just say we updated it to fifteen?
Yeah, yeah.
So that's fine then, okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood what happened there. Glad to know that we are definitely looking at the ALUCP. I really like, you know, we have the template now from the newer project in South San Francisco, and it is actually sort of puzzling to me that we aren't looking at simply saying, how about, you know, South San Francisco and San Bruno get together and go to the airport land commission and say, how about we just make that the rule, rather than seeking an exception or an override in each individual case, that, you know, the zoning has been that you essentially couldn't add housing at all under these noise contours, and I understand the airport's concern there, that they don't want to add housing and have new residents who say, oh, no, there's airport noise. It's like, dude, you knew there was an airport there. And, you know, like, whatever the rules are in terms of you must build the certain noise standards and blah, 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 but like, you can't sue the airport over noise, like it's, you know, like you, caveat emptor, right? It does seem like rather than making an exception property by property, that we should just make that the new rule for everything.
Yeah, we've definitely had those conversations internally. I hear what you're saying, and I think that's a great idea. I know that we have coordinated with our counterparts in South City on similar, but similar things related to the airport, but it would, if we simply did that citywide, it would open up housing and even say the parking lot for Caltrain and some of those properties around there, which are kind of encumbered by this as well.
And I know the east side of my own neighborhood of Bel Air, and kind of just along, just north of 380 as well, there's areas that you could potentially talk about. I mean, they're not gonna be, I think, considered right now, but, yeah, it just seems like as a long-term thing, even looking up to the next rent-a-cycle, like, that, you know, like, this is, it's just kind of, you know, our current rule is by default, you can't do it at all, and it's like, well, everybody knows why you can't, and just say, like, the owners can't sue the airport because of noise, you know, like, you knew what you were building, build it so it is appropriately noise-insulated, and you're good.
Yeah, I think you're preaching to the choir there, for sure.
I really, I really hope we'll see that moving forwards. Let's see, I have several notes. Regarding the height limits, I definitely think, I mean, I think it just was an unfortunate oversight when we did the ballot initiative to raise our height limits along the TCP area, that we didn't include the southern El Camino. I mean, it just seems like that seems like an obvious thing to go back to the voters, and if we're gonna go back to the voters to raise that, we might as well include some other areas, and I hope there are considerations around what that might be, like, I don't know if, you know, we have this housing in the eastern part of Bay Hill that's expected, is that still limited to three stories? Because I know there's like, just like, there's like a tiny little southeast corner of Bay Hill that was excluded in the Bay Hill... that was excluded in the Bay Hill specific plan because it's in the TCP.
Yeah.
But could, I mean, could we? I guess, I don't know whether, I obviously like, I guess I'm recruit, recused on Bay Hill if she's not allowed to vote on anything because I am married to a Googler, always the full disclosure. But it does seem like an area where, you know, like we could expand that exemption from the height limits deeper into Bay Hill, so, and you could roll that into a initiative for dealing with the south end of El Camino. Um, so I, I hope we're looking at more opportunities. I mean, the Bay Hill, it, it just seems like adding more density there where it is well separated from our existing neighborhoods. And so, you know, nobody's, um, sacred cows are being impacted. No, you know, we don't, it's not directly overshadowing anybody's house and so on. That seems like a real opportunity area, um, and it, you know, once it's committed as a three-story thing, like it's going to sit there for thirty years. Um, and so it, it seems like we should be, you know, thinking about being more aggressive with that. Um, do you know offhand how many acres Tanforin is?
I want to say it's forty-four acres.
So we're talking about twenty to twenty-five, like twenty-five-ish DU per acre for that? I mean, I guess they want to include office in it as well, but that seems really low for something that's literally on top of a BART station and one of the best BART stations in the region. Um, that is well provisioned with parking and, you know, like I, before I moved to San Bruno, I commuted through San Bruno. I was, I was, uh, coming up, so, uh, a lot of days I was driving from Mountain View to San Bruno, um, in order to, to take the BART there. Because, uh, the Millbrae Station, of course, Millbrae loves to boast about how they're this transit hub, but because of the way the BART splits, um, San Bruno has twice as many trains. And so if you are a commuter, it's a lot more attractive.
Hmm.
Um, and, yeah, it ju- it just seems like, I mean, they're definitely, there's an advantage to putting jobs directly adjacent to transit as well, so don't get me wrong on that. But in terms of our ongoing, you know, our own jobs housing balance, which is going to be brought closer to the average for the region by Bay Hill, um, you know, we had historically been more of a residential community, like better balanced than some of the other cities. But that's really not going to be the case so much after Bay Hill is built out. And I, I think we really want to avoid aggravating that and that we want to make sure that, uh, any office that's added is at least fully offset by additional housing, if not more, given the overall deficit for the region. Um, and so I, I really hope that, I know you've said like a thousand is a minimum and, you know, if we saw the kind of, you know, fifty percent more that we saw in some of the other projects, like that would be fantastic. And it just seems like a thousand is a low number of DU per acre. I mean, it's not even the Mullen density, right? Mullen density is thirty.
Yeah, go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, yeah, through the chair. So I think what we need to remember with, uh, Tanforin, the, the folks that bought it, the Alexandria, uh, folks, you know, they're, 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 uh, uh, you know, developers of life science campuses. And so what, what we anticipate happening is, you know, they're going to carve out a, probably a site, um, for housing and it will be pretty high density, you know, because the units won't lobby spread out over the entire campus. Um, so, you know, we're just waiting to see where we, the reason we kept it with a thousand is that was consistent with what, um, the re-envisioning Tanfran literature that we put out. So, you know, again, we're hopeful that they'll, um, you know, provide some more. But, um, you know, it'll be up to them. They have committed to, uh, providing the thousand, one thousand units. Um, and we don't know how that's going to be configured, but we do anticipate it would be a higher density type pro- uh, product, um, probably closer to the BART, uh, BART station and any kind of, um, you know, pedestrian or plaza, um, or mixed use area that they create, um, you know, with, uh, perhaps a little bit of retail and restaurants or other amenities, um, there by the BART station. So again, we're just waiting to see what the plans are going to look like.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think anything that we can do to encourage them to say, it is ten, I'm trying to remember, is Tanforin itself already exempted from the three-story?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I thought, I thought so, but I was just, it was, it's, I, I don't have the map in front of me. So, yeah, so I mean, if they're looking at doing at least five and potentially taking advantage of bonuses to bring that up to seven or something, then that you can, like, you just, you know, I mean, like, I, I like Tanforin Mall, don't get me wrong. I, I've shopped there and gone to the movies there for years and, um, but I think that, you know, it has these vast, just open pavement parking lots, which are just, uh, you know, ninety-nine percent of the time, like largely empty. And, uh, it, it seems like that site, um, has so much potential, uh, that the city, you know, the city overall is so well positioned in the peninsula to be like twenty to twenty-five minutes from everything in the entire region. Um, and we should be, we should be making better use of the land.
Yeah.
Um, ba, 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 so, um, I, I know I've talked with, uh, uh, Michael, about, Michael Loflin about this a little bit. Um, I have concerns around the fact that there doesn't seem like we have formally stated our case, that we have the hundred percent probability development on some of these, that there is a, a principle from HCD around, um, discounting your inventory by this probability of development. Um, and I think, uh, it seems like we have a very clear case for certainly the pipeline projects, that those are essentially hundred percent, they're going to be, they're, they're baked in, they're going to get done one way or another. Um, but in some of these other, uh, uh, areas, like the, the single family area infill ones, I'm not clear that those are as certain, uh, that the infill parcels that are under consideration. Um, whether those will come up to be questioned by HCD, if they, if they might be, need to be considered for discounting. Um, the ADUs, I think were discussed at, uh, council and that's great. I mean, I, I, we, we've been doing, I really appreciate the staff's work on getting our, our ADU rules streamlined and, um, and we're, you know, we're doing really well producing that. And so I think we have a strong case for that component of our inventory. Um, coming to some of the concerns that Commissioner Madden raised, I mean, I think, you know, like we, we had, gosh, when I started coming to council meetings after I moved into the area, I mean, this, uh, the, the work that's been ongoing for updating our storm drains and, and, uh, water lines and sewer lines, it, it looks to me like we are, if anything, over-provisioned relative to this prospective growth in terms of our utility capacity, like, I mean, obviously the investments that we have planned have to keep happening, but we, we have planned for a robust system, it seems to me. Um, and, uh, and I, I would say in regard to the, the school concerns, God grant us that we should actually need to reopen some schools. I mean, I know so many people whose children have left the area and the really like the, uh, instigating factor in my getting involved in, in caring about land use at more than academic level was having one of my best friends leave the area because she couldn't see raising a kid here. And so I really, if we, if we become a welcoming enough town that families with children would like to live here, that would be a good thing. Um, so, uh, and, you know, she's now in Salt Lake raising her daughter, so, you know. Um, uh, I, regarding the school sites, I do, I mean, I, I feel like we have heard from a lot of residents about concerns about the playing fields at, at the schools. And I do, did not discuss the possibility of rezoning that. And I don't know if it's fully baked in, that those are definitely going to be, you know, eighth of an acre style at the smallest, um, single-family homes, taking up the entire thing and consuming the playing fields. But it, it does seem like it is not outside the power of the city council to rezone that to allow for bungalow courts or townhouses or whatever it is that allows you to get the same number of units and potentially even more units. And, you know, you sell them for a little less per unit, but with the same amount of money total and the developer thinks pencil for them, you know, you'd have to work it out with them. But it doesn't seem like it would be beyond the possibility to rezone that area to preserve the playing fields. And, you know, whether that means making some additional density concession of the developer because, you know, they can buy right, build the existing zoning. Um, it, it does seem like a, a zoning change to help the community preserve playing fields would not be unreasonable.
I, um, I can make a brief comment on that. Um, the, um, Summer Hill Homes is, um, probably going to be presenting a proposal to the city very soon, um, for housing, uh, on the site with, with a plan to, um, you know, still provide, uh, fields there. So, um, and I think just getting back to your kind of larger question, so, um, on the, you know, in terms of the probability of the sites being developed, um, we, the, the amount of, the number of inquiries or, uh, preliminary plans that are in process now, uh, both, both within the TCP area and then of course we have the Engvall, uh, prop, the school site, uh, which, you know, they actually have an official application in, um, with, uh, an application coming in for Crestmore. Um, you know, these, they, these are very solid, um, you know, they're, the, the probability is extremely solid for the sites that we have, that we are laying out. And so we, we've met with, um, twenty-one elements, um, and they've, you know, they're, they're affirming for us that, you know, most of our sites are, are, are very solid, you know, for, uh, for presenting to HCD. Um, so we feel, we feel good about that, so.
Okay. Um.
And, and through the chair, I just also wanted to remind you at, at some point, we will want to, um, open it up to the public to see if there's any, um, anyone wishes to, to also speak on this item.
I think, I was just like glancing back at my, and I think that's all I, I have. Um, were there any other hands, either just for general questions before we go to public comment or specific slides? Does not look like it. Shall we open public comment? I think we're down to two attendees, so I think we should have pretty quick comments.
Yeah, there's no, there's no hands up, chair.
Anyone want to raise their hands?
Don't see any hands.
All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Through the chair, I'll motion.
Oh, I guess, do we have any action today? So do we need to close the hearing?
Uh, it, it is, it is good that you, um,
Okay.
wanted to make, make a motion to close the public comment.
Okay, all right, sorry, go ahead, Rick.
All right, make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
And the roll call?
Chair Harmon.
Hi.
Vice Chair Madden.
Aye.
Commissioner Biassodi.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Lethen.
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan.
Aye.
Six zero, motion passes.
All right, returning to our agenda, we have items from staff.
Yeah, there, uh, so two, two items, um, uh, just first looking for volunteers for the March tenth Architecture Review Committee. Any volunteers for that?
I could be a backup. I'm going to be out of town and I'd have to conduct it from out of town, but I, I could consider being a backup if you get.
Okay, okay.
I can, I can volunteer.
I can volunteer as well.
Okay, very good.
Do we need one more if, if we have one backup and two actual volunteers so far?
Yeah, that, uh, it would be helpful if, um,
I can, I can do it as well.
Okay, thank you, Belle. All right, very good. Um, and then the other item was, um, this afternoon I did send an email, uh, regarding a, uh, conference, uh, for planning commissioners, uh, that's being held in San Ramon. Um, if, if anyone is, it is, you know, it is a bit of a time commitment and it is unfortunately short notice. We just found out about it, um, that it's in, um, it's in March. But, um, if you are interested in attending, um, attending that, please let us know and we can register for you.
I, I will say I went to, um, a kind of educational conference, uh, up at Sonoma State before the pandemic and it wa- I found it really interesting, um, you know, talking to, to other people from around the state about, uh, what their experiences are on some of these issues and, uh, uh, really interesting presentation of that about, uh, the fire, fire issues, uh, which I, I think are a concern to us with the canyon. I, I definitely, I need to check my schedule, but I'm potentially interested, so we'll, we'll see.
Okay.
I have to check as well.
Okay, great. Okay, that's, yeah, that's all, um,
All right.
had from staff.
Uh, do we have any comments from members? Any items? I don't, doesn't look like it.
No.
Okay, all right then, then we are up to our adjournment. The time is ten nineteen PM. Our rex, next regular meeting, not rex regular, uh, will be held on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven PM. Hopefully we can get through those continued items reasonably quickly and the public will cooperate with not saying the same thing all over again. Um, and I will see all of you next month.
Okay, very good.
Good night.
Night. Take care.